All right, everybody, we do have a quorum, so I called a special town meeting to order. And first up, which is our tradition, we're going to continue by honoring someone special in our town who has served our town very well. So in early February, when I heard the news, there was no question who Town Meeting would want to honor tonight. After a 47-year career with 30 years in Norwood, the last 12 as our chief, Chief Brooks announced his retirement. As part of the announcement, he said, "I still love my job, but cannot do it forever, and so I have always known that I need to choose a time to depart when a smooth leadership succession can occur." Chief, we kind of wish you would do your job forever, but I know you're leaving in good hands. Listing all of the chief's accomplishments and accolades would take the whole night, and we have a pretty heavy agenda tonight, so I know that he's looking forward to his next chapter, enjoying great family time with his wife Donna, children, and grandchildren. And we're going to miss him. Chief, you said it's been an honor to serve as a police officer for this long, and amazing and an amazing privilege to serve as Norwood's chief of police. It has been our privilege to have you serve us, and we are honored, you this evening, by having you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Chief Brooks. Please rise for the pledge. We'll applaud after, guys.
(Applause).
Just a minute to thank Town Meeting for their tremendous support over the years. Not just of me, it's certainly of the department, but more importantly, the men and women of the Norwood Police Department. It's been my honor to serve as your chief of police. Enjoy your night.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, you get to take that special host or on one last ride tonight. Sadly, since we last met, we have lost one Town Meeting member. District 4 member Kimberly Butters passed away in February. Please join me in a moment of silence in Kimberly's memory. May her memory be a blessing. A quick announcement, and I know that everybody's been waiting to hear about this. I am very happy to report that we will begin implementing electronic voting with the May Town Meetings. There'll be some optional training available beforehand and on the first night of the meeting. And really, on behalf of the Town Clerk and I, would like to thank Town Meeting again for approving electronic voting, and we look forward to implementing it in May. So before we start, a few reminders. All questions, comments, once recognized, go through the moderator. You are addressing me as Madam Moderator. Everyone knows my one-liner about this is the only, the only time I enjoy being called a madam, and I appreciate if people, it's madam, not ms., not mrs., not mr., madam. I'll recognize you. Need to raise your hand unless you're a recognized speaker. When you're recognized to speak, please stand. And we have a special setup tonight with microphones. We have a microphone that you can walk to in the back, over on my left side. We have the microphone up front here, and we have Kevin, who is ready to run. Please, and when we get to registered speakers later on, we're going to try to actually have people queued up so we can move it along a little quicker, standing by the microphones at the ready. The sponsor or proponent of a motion has 10 minutes to speak. Group presentations, which have been coordinated in advance with the moderator, will have 20. Each subsequent speaker is given five minutes, allowed five minutes, and can be granted a time-certain extension by the body, one time, one-time extension. Only Town Meeting members can make motions and vote. Normally, we would ask non-Town Meeting members to sit in the back. We've been a little bit more flexible with post-COVID and to allow for social distancing, so please make sure that your badge is prominently displayed if you're a Town Meeting member so we know, more importantly, that I know, who is eligible to vote and who is eligible to make a motion. NCM is carrying us live tonight. Thank you, NCM. So just a reminder, everybody is on live television, so I know everybody is going to be civil and respectful. Also, you never know when the cameras are panning the audience, so you never know what's going to be seen across the airwaves, so just be mindful of that. And then last but not least, before we get to the first article, because there's never time at the end, and I'm suspecting that we will be pretty rushed to get out of here, I want to thank, huge thank you. It takes a village to put Town Meeting on, I think everybody knows that here. The Town Clerk's team, the Town Manager's office, the high school custodians and building department staff, we couldn't do it without them, and for this one, the Community Development Planning Department played a huge role as well. So with that, I'm going to declare Special Town Meeting in session. With that, and in order to move us along and actually to take us in an order that makes a little bit more sense, we're going to take Article 2 before Article 1. Article 1 and 2 are interrelated. The definitions are part of Article 2, which is very key to the discussion that we would have about Article 1. So with that, we're going to go to Article 2. We're going to a motion by the Planning Board, Mr. Pachekowski.
Thank you. Move that the Town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Norwood as printed in the warrant, lest the phrase, or take any other action in the matter.
All right, is there a, second is Mr. Sheehan, I believe, and Mr. Hatchey, we have a report by the Planning Board?
Yes, there's a second. All right, thank you, Madam Moderator. On February 12, 2024, the Planning Board opened a series of public hearings for each of the proposed articles on the warrant for Special Town Meeting scheduled for tonight, March 21, 2024. The articles that were the subject of each hearing included kennel's definition in uses. With regard to this particular proposal, the hearing was opened on February 12, 2024, at which time testimony was received. The Board deliberated, and the hearing was closed, and the Board moved to a vote. The Board voted 5-0 to recommend approval of the article to Town Meeting subject to a series of amendments to the article language as printed in the warrant. Three residents asked questions about the articles and existing regulation inspections of kennels. One resident spoke in support of the articles and requested certain amendments. After discussion of the feedback received by the public, the Board recommended the following changes be made to the articles. Article 1, uses. 1, removal of the PMUD column in Section 3.1.5F, which is the Use Regulation Service Establishments subcategory. Number 2, addition of LSDD and NSCMUOD columns in Section 3.1.5F, which is Use Regulation Service Establishments. Number 3, amendment of Section 3.1.5F 9 into 9A and 9B. Number 4, Section 3.1.5F 9A, addition of the words boarding, training kennel, commercial breeding, to further define the use. Section 3.1.5F 9A, change the use in manufacturing, the M district, from N to BA. And number 6, Section 3.1.5F 9B, to create new use category for personal kennel. With regard to definitions, Article 2, the proposed is, Section 11 definitions, personal kennels, the proposed change is to change the number of dogs in a pack or collection from more than four to more than three. In Article 1, changes 1 and 2 correct an error made when drafting the article, and update the table of uses to include the newest zoning districts. Changes 3 and 4 further define the commercial kennel uses to more accurately reflect the proposed definitions. Change 5 would allow commercial kennels to operate in the manufacturing district with a special permit from the, excuse me, a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Change 6 creates a new use category for personal kennels and allows them to operate by special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals in the single-family residential districts. In Article 2, change 1 lowers the number of dogs in a pack that are considered a personal kennel. These changes are intended to provide additional protection for residential abutters to both commercial and personal kennels, as well as provide additional oversight by the ZBA to potential living conditions for the affected animals. A full copy of the articles with the above amendments is available on the Community Development website and is available to Town Meeting members. The hearing was opened on February 12, at which time testimony was received, the Board deliberated, and closed the vote. And once again, the Board voted 5-0 to recommend approval to the Town Meeting. One resident asked a question, and one asked a question in addition to the support of the article.
Thank you, Mr. Hatchey. Is there anything from the Planning Board on the article besides the report?
I don't believe that we have any further comments.
From the Planner? All right, Ms. Dixon?
(Inaudible)
Yes.
(Inaudible)
No, 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 this is Ms. Dixon. I'm actually calling on the, the Planning Board is deferring to the Community Development Planner.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name's Sarah Dixon. I'm the Director of Community Development for the Town of Norwood. I'm also a Town Meeting member in District 7. The intention of this article was to further clarify and define certain uses regarding kennels. Zoning at its core is an attempt by the Town to kind of organize sometimes competing land uses in areas of town that make sense, and to create regulations to protect residents and business owners from, again, sometimes those competing uses. This is an instance where practice that we've seen in town has led us to propose some further clarifications, again, for protection of residential abutters to both personal and commercial kennels. Our Health Department regulates and operates inspections to provide oversight over kennels, and licenses are issued by the Clerk's Office, but our zoning bylaw has been relatively silent on these. So to be able to encourage appropriate uses in different parts of town, specifically the single residential districts, these three definitions have been proposed to be inserted into the bylaw. You should note that with one exception, these definitions match the state's definitions of each of these things, so the commercial boarding or training kennel, the commercial breeder kennel, and the personal kennel. The change that the Planning Board has proposed that makes our definition of personal kennel slightly more restrictive than the state's language is to restrict a personal kennel to a pack or collection of more than three dogs, three months or older. The state's language says a pack or collection of more than four dogs or older. And again, these changes are proposed as a means of being able to provide extra protection for residential abutters to these types of operations, and also to provide a little bit of oversight for the animals involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. We have one registered speaker on this, Michael J., District 2.
Thank you. Michael Jazak, District 2. I think Ms. Dixon might have just answered my question, but I was just curious, when I listened to the informational session, it appeared that the impetus for this particular zoning change was based on a complaint about a single property in town. So I was just curious as to whether any sort of consideration was given first as to encouraging the people affected to, you know, pursue private remedies like under Public Nuisance Law, because it does seem like a zoning amendment is kind of a broad solution, and also wouldn't even provide a solution for the folks that are living near this particular use, given that it appears that their use would be grandfathered in as a non-conforming use. But I think with your, I'm sorry, Madam Moderator, with the answer from Ms. Dixon, it appears that this may be a more widespread problem around town. So just wondering if Ms. Dixon or someone else in the town could kind of give us some more information about what has been seen on the ground. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon, do you want to handle that, or do you want Ms. Jones to handle that?
(Inaudible)
All right, Mr. Mizuko's got it. Thank you, Mr. Mizuko.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I have the distinct honor of being the Town's Dog Hearing Officer when we have animal complaints, certainly one of the more thrilling parts of my job. We, complaints involving animals, particularly dangerous and nuisance dogs, follow a very strict statutory framework, and we can't really vary outside of that. So sometimes there's a problem that we just can't do anything about, and you can issue some restrictions on dangerous dogs, on nuisance dogs, there's very little that we can do. It comes up a couple times a year. Our challenge is more that the zoning, if we don't match what's in state statute, there's almost nothing that we can do. So somebody comes up and they say, "What kind of kennel am I operating?", and if we don't have anything in the zoning, it's sort of unclear what they're allowed or not to do. So it doesn't fix anything, as you said, going back, but nuisance complaints come up, nuisance or dangerous complaints come up three to four times a year, sometimes we have a hearing. But we kind of found ourselves in the last few years, times where we didn't match state statute. And really, about 20, 25 years ago, the state updated their nuisance and dangerous dog statute with some of these definitions, and we just never really followed up with zoning and made sure that our zoning matched what was going on with state law.
Thank you, Ms. Mizuko. Anything else on the motion? Ms. Dixon?
Sorry about that, I forgot there were two of us.
And you are?
Doris Dixon, District 1. So when I watched the presentation about this article, my initial thought was to vote for it, but when you stuck in the personal pack and applied a number to it that if anybody had more than three dogs in their home, regardless of where they're housed, that they would have to go in front of the Zoning Board to get approval. I can't vote for it like that, because there were dogs in my neighborhood that are five pounds, and they make far more noise than my 40-pound hound. There are, there are a lot of dogs in my neighborhood, and it isn't a matter of quantity, and you cannot, you can't fix the issues with the dogs because the issues are more with the owners. But there are plenty of yards in my area, even on Railroad Ave, that their yards can house four dogs easily, that maybe they have two and they want to foster two, maybe they have three and they want to foster one. But they shouldn't have to go in front of a zoning board that could change their mind based on the different people in the zoning board. And as the zoning board has now proven, they will undo something somebody approved 20 years ago. So I'm sorry, I am a big no on this. Thank you.
And just to clarify, Ms. Dixon, I think you're actually talking about Article 1, because we're talking about Article 2 now, the definitions, right?
They go together, so for me, it's...
Yeah, both of them.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, anything else on, Mr. DeLuca?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and to members of the group.
And Mr. DeLuca, you are Town Council, right?
Town Council, Town of Norwood, thank you. I just wanted to clarify a bit on the definition of personal kennel. This is not intended, nor would it have effect for those households that may own, for personal reasons and personal pleasure, more than three dogs. It is for the purpose of, if ownership was for the purpose of breeding, showing, otherwise selling those dogs more than three, this would have an effect. It is not intended, nor would it be operational with any household that simply has and owns three or more dogs.
That's a good call out, Mr. DeLuca, thank you. Anything else on the motion? Seeing none, we're going to put it to a vote. Again, this is Article 2, on the definitions of commercial boarding or training kennel, commercial breeder kennel, and personal kennel, as printed in the warrant. This is a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All right, motion carries, 131 to 1. Article 1, Planning Board, Mr. Pachekowski.
Move that the Town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Norwood as printed in the warrant, lest the phrase, or take any other action in the matter, and with the following changes. Number 1, removal of PMUD column in Section 3.1.5. F, Use Regulations Service Establishments. Number 2, addition of LSDD and NSCMUOD columns in Section 3.1.5. F, Use Regulations Service Establishments.
And that is seconded by Mr. Sheehan, right?
That's seconded by me, thank you.
All right. Mr. Hatchey, you've already given the report on this. This is basically, the changes that are noted here are changes in the service establishment table. Mr. Petchy was actually instrumental in pointing out that there was a typo in the original warrant, so the motion is correcting that to have the correct categories. Anything on this motion from the Planning Board?
I don't believe the Board has any comment. I'm not sure Ms. Dixon does.
Okay, all right. Anything on the motion from, yes, Sarah?
Francis Hopcraft, District 1. I noticed that we have this suggestion that we add two columns, but there's no indication of what the letter will be on the service line that goes across there. Should those be Ns, be As, whatever? Can you tell us what goes in those columns for this particular section?
Ms. Jones, you can take that.
Ms. Jones, I am the Assistant Director of Community Development. I am a Town Meeting member in District 6. It's Ns in both of those columns. Those two districts are the Norwood Space Center Mixed Use Overlay District, so we wouldn't be having kennels at the Norwood Space Center. And then the LSDD is the Life Science Development District, which many of us know as the zone that's in the same area as the Moderna campus. So kennels would also be restricted in that zone.
Yeah, to kind of put it simply, what happened was the latest zoning bylaw chart wasn't used in the warrant, so this is just the latest update and reflecting the latest update. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Again, this is a two-thirds vote. This is to adopt the use regulations that are listed in Article 1. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
All right, motion carries. Sounded like that was a 131 to 2. That takes us to Article 3. By the Planning Board, Mr. Pachekowski.
That the Town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Norwood as printed in the warrant, lest the phrase, or take any other action in the matter.
Mr. Sheehan, you're seconding that?
Seconding that, thank you.
Okay, and this is about notice requirements on zoning bylaw amendment hearings by the Planning Board. And Mr. Hatchey, you have a report.
Your Honor, yes, Madam Moderator. I apologize, I might have read this inclusive of the prior notice. Notice on zoning amendments. The hearing was opened on February 12, 2024, at which time testimony was received, the Board deliberated, and the hearing was closed. The Board moved to a vote. The Board voted 5-0 to recommend approval of the article to Town Meeting. And in this particular amendment, one resident did ask a question in addition to speaking in support of the article. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Hatchey. Anything else from the Planning Board or the Planner? Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So this article is really about how to increase notice of any zoning amendments that are made before Town Meeting. The Zoning Act 40A requires that we have a public hearing, and that we post notice of that public hearing in the local newspapers, but we don't have an obligation necessarily to notify abutters the same way we would for, say, a special permit at ZBA or a variance from that Board. So we've heard an interest from Town Meeting members in recent Town Meetings, trying to increase that level of transparency. And so these changes in Section 1.5.2 seek to achieve a reasonable increase in the amount of notice that we're able to provide. The previous bylaw language, if I can use a non-technical term, is a little bit squishy on how it defines parties that are deemed to be interested parties or affected otherwise by the nature of the proposed change. So the intention here is to provide a little bit more clarification of what exactly that affected or interested party is. So the language that's proposed here identifies those parties as owners of property that are subject to the change in zoning, and then direct abutters to those properties. It also adds a requirement that Town Meeting members that are in the district of that affected land receive notice of the hearing as well by email through the certified email list from the Clerk's Office. Our goal, again, is really just to provide some specificity here, a standard by which the Planning Board and the Planning Department can be held when it comes to mailing notice of these hearings out to the public. Thank you.
Anything on the motion from the Body?
Jean Taylor, District 8. I just want to say thank you very much for listening to Town Meeting. It's been a long time coming, and I'm glad you all got together and included Town Meeting members and extended the notices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Gail Ladani, District 8.
Gail Ladani, District Eight. I also want to say thank you for doing, you know, having more transparency, but how, so is transparency going to be, is notification going to be given for everything that's done? In other words, even the Boston Providence Highway, that whole issue that came about when we weren't properly notified? So does this cover everything?
So I believe the answer is it covers any zoning bylaw change.
Any, any, okay.
Is that correct? All right, we'll let, we'll let the Assistant Town Planner take it.
Holly Jones, again. So what this covers is any bylaw change where the notice, as described, would go to 200 or less people. And so, for example, we gave such notice for the MBTA communities zoning that we did today, because when we looked at the owners and the abutters to those properties, that number came to less than 200. So that's in an effort to provide adequate notice, but we're not sending notice for every, every zoning change. For instance, say, the floodplain overlay district change that would impact thousands of properties in the town of Norwood and be a large financial burden on the town to send all of those mailings. So 200 was where we put the cap for that.
Is there a follow-up?
And Sarah just noted it's up from 20.
Do you stand up, please?
Sure. So when you're saying, so that went up from 20 to 200, that being direct abutters? As, or just random 200?
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, it's property owners and direct abutters.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Neil Rizzo, Kevin, you could just stay right over there.
Katie Neil Rizzo, District Two. I also wanted to take a chance to thank the Planning Department and the Community Development Department Heads for addressing concerns that we have expressed at town meeting and putting those into action. It makes it feel like a much more democratic process, as well as providing so many opportunities throughout the year for the public to give feedback and provide their opinions on, on things that are happening in the department. It makes it, it makes it feel much more like a, we're having a part in the process.
Ms. Howard?
Thank you. Judith Howard, District Three. Is it possible to notify town meeting members of the district at which the bylaw applies to?
Ms. Jones is going to take that.
Thank you.
That's included in the proposed article.
Thank you.
Mr. Greeley?
Joe Greeley, District Six. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Likewise, I'm totally in favor of this. I think it's a great idea, and we've seen in recent town meeting, meetings that it wasn't as transparent as you're proposing, so I think it's a great, it's a great move forward, and I think we all appreciate that. But what you're basically doing is you're putting some of the onus on the town meeting representatives, which is, as far as I'm concerned, it's a good thing. And, you know, this is kind of a challenge to us, to those of us who are town meeting members, because we've always received things, and I'm just as guilty of this, receiving something in the mail and saying, okay, well, that's 12 blocks away from me, I don't really need to know about it, nor do I have to do anything about it. But I think this is really a, like, this is a change of strategy and a change of mindset for us, town meeting members as well. We can't just leaf through the junk mail and, for the same with the junk mail, and, you know, recycle it or do whatever. I mean, the, the call, the call to action that you're proposing for the town meeting members is to actually do something with these notices. And I, I guess I challenge myself, and I challenge all of us as town meeting members, like, we have to be ready to act on these, and we have to understand why we're getting paid the big bucks we are to be town meeting representatives. So I think this is a challenge for us to earn our pay. I'm fully in favor of it, and I challenge all of us to stop thinking about, okay, what would we do with these notices? And who are the people that we need to notify? So thanks for giving us some homework. Totally in favor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley. All right, Kevin, right, right there.
Brian Palmetier, District Eight. I just had a question about the definition. I was trying to find it in other places in the bylaws of direct abutters. I'm thinking, for example, I mean, it makes sense, anybody that borders the property, but what about somebody across the street or across Route One? Would that be considered an abutter? You're going to see across the, across Route One if somebody wants to change a sign or something, or, or some sort of bylaw. Do you, I guess I'd like a definition of direct abutters?
Yep.
Since it, since it was actually abutters before, and now it says direct abutters.
Ms. Jones, are you going to take that? Or, all right.
We would include people across the street as direct abutters.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmetier. All right, let's put it to a vote. This is also a two-thirds majority. And actually, John, can you put the, the warrant up there? That probably would help people. There we go. Thank you, John. We'll give everybody a second. All right, going to put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Three, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right. Was that really a no, Mr.? Yeah, I didn't think so. I'm going to declare it's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Brian, before we go, I don't think this is, this one is on. Yeah, I can't hear. All right, that brings us to Article Four by the Planning Board. Mr. Pachakowski.
Move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Norwood as printed in the warrant, lest the phrase, or take any other action in the matter, and with the following change. Number one, Section 9.5. B, first line, delete the words "having a land area of approximately 78 acres in size."
All right, and Mr. Sheen, you're seconding it?
I second that, thank you.
And, Mr. Hatchey, a report by the Planning Board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The hearing on this matter was opened on February 12, 2024, at which time testimony was received, the board deliberated, and the hearing was closed. The board moved to a vote. The board voted five-zero to recommend approval of this article to town meeting. Nine residents in attendance asked questions. Eight residents and one business owner spoke in support, citing the public process, local need for more housing for seniors, workers, veterans, et cetera, and transit-oriented development. Six residents voiced concerns, which included concerns about strain on town resources, stormwater impacts, and schools. Additionally, eight residents submitted letters for the board's consideration, with six expressing support for the article as written, and two requesting revisions.
All right. For the purposes of discussion and debate, we're actually going to cover four and five together. Just for reference, Article Five is the zoning map. We're really going to be talking about the particular article, and it's a little hard to do it without reference to the map, so we will be putting the map up here as well. Mr. Hatchey, I think you're also going to comment on Article Five.
Moderator, with regard to the zoning map, the hearing on this matter was opened on February 12, 2024, at which time testimony was received, the board deliberated, the hearing was closed, and the board moved to a vote. The board voted five-zero to recommend approval of the article to town meeting. Two residents in attendance asked questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I believe that there is a presentation, and this is a joint presentation by the Planning Board and the 3A Committee? And Ms. Dixon, you will make sure everybody is introduced as well, right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Again, I'm Sarah Dixon. I'm the Director of Community Development, also a town meeting member in District Seven. It is a privilege to introduce this proposal to you, as well as the folks who worked tirelessly for the last 18 months to get to this night. On the Planning Board, Brian Hatchey as our Chair, Debbie Homewood, Vice Chair, Ernie Pachakowski, Clerk, Rob Bamber, Joe Sheen, and Derek Mason as our Associate Member. And then on the MBTA Communities Task Force, Ernie Pachakowski served as Chair, Rachel Churchill, Shannon Greenwell, Matt Lane, Pat Ronan, Mike Rosen, Holly Jones, and Sarah Dixon as ex-officio members. I'd like to turn it over to Rachel, and she'll give you a brief overview on what exactly this, this law is all about.
Thank you. Good evening, Rachel Churchill. I'm also a town meeting member in District Five. As you all know, in 2021, Governor Baker, together with the state legislature, passed an amendment to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, the zoning act in our state, by adding a new Section 3A, and there were also regulations adopted under that statute. It impacts 177 different cities and towns in the state that have varying degrees of access to MBTA transit, and they all have some similar minimum standards, as you can see on the slide, specifically that require them to legalize multifamily housing near transit as of rate, which will allow property owners to apply for and receive a building permit for multifamily housing without the need for zoning relief. Norwood falls within the commuter rail community, next slide. And for Norwood specifically, under both the statute and the regulations, it provides that we need to have a zoning district, district with a minimum average density of 15 units per acre. The zoning district size needs to be at least 50 acres, and 90% of those acres need to be located within half a mile radius of our commuter rail stations. In Norwood, with three commuter rail stations, we have about 860 total acres, from which we can choose to place these districts. Throughout all 177 communities, the state statute prohibits placing any age restrictions or requirements about the age of individuals who can live in these units, and it also restricts any kind of requirements that would inhibit the use of potential units for habitation by families. Also, the regulations set forth that Norwood needs to have a minimum unit capacity of 2,045 units in an appropriate zone. So what is a minimum unit capacity? It does not require Norwood to build an additional 2,045 units. It does not require Norwood to build any additional units. It does not require Norwood to make the construction of multifamily housing economically feasible. Unit capacity is a hypothetical build-out based on a calculation of a formula prepared by the state to compare the size of the zoning district to the available building under the dimensional restrictions we place in that district. So that unit capacity calculation assumes that every structure within this overlay district is razed to the ground regardless of its use. Existing commercial, multifamily, mixed use would all be removed and then rebuilt exclusively as multifamily housing to the maximum density, dimensional requirements permitted, which, of course, there are very few areas in town that would be ripe for that kind of complete demolition and rebuilding. So we don't have an expectation that 2,045 units would actually be built. It's really a calculation that the state uses to make sure that the district, that any one of these 177 towns actually build, actually permit the building of additional units dimensionally. So for example, if a town were to have a 100-acre zoning district that permissively includes a zoning distance, density of 50 units per acre, but that zoning dimensional requirements in the district had 200-foot setbacks or required 95% open space, that would not be a compliant district under that calculation. And I wanted to pass it on to Shannon next.
Thank you. Shannon Greenwell, District Three Town Meeting Member. Perfect. So why was 3A passed? So the state recognized a range of motivations to support this law. First of all, maintaining a healthy and sustainable community requires housing choice across types and prices. It's important to note here that this is something that Norwood has done well throughout our history. It has always been a more affordable community with a variety of housing options for hard-working people at all income levels to enjoy a good quality of life. However, many affluent communities across eastern Massachusetts have not taken the same approach, and instead, decades of underproducing housing across 177 communities has created a serious housing shortage in our entire region. Many communities don't allow multifamily housing at all, and/or require new homes to have large lots, sometimes more than an acre, essentially making more affordable styles of housing illegal to be built. High prices and low supply displace or destabilize college graduates, young professionals, seniors, and single-income households, in addition to middle-class families and people with disabilities. This poses a serious threat to our economy as working families are squeezed out and many workers are leaving the state. The housing crisis is a regional problem, and 3A is a regional solution. It does, however, allow for local implementation. The state law still gives communities local control to choose the location and dimensional requirements of the district. This law is about fair share. It intends to ensure that all communities, not just a select few, zone for more housing options. Next, please. So the task force has been meeting regularly since mid-2022, and at the direction of the Board of Selectmen submitted an action plan to achieve interim compliance in early 2023. Community engagement, including education and outreach, was the main focus for most of 2023. By the fall, the task force presented a draft bylaw and recommendation to the Planning Board. The Planning Board held a series of informal work sessions and open meetings, and once the final recommendation to town meeting was submitted to the warrant, the board and the task force held a series of over-six events to prepare for and inform the public in advance of tonight's town meeting. Significantly, the town received results of its pre-review earlier this month. Both the Attorney General's Office and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, formerly DHCD, have pre-reviewed this bylaw and discussed its findings with our planning team. Their response was favorable and did not require any changes to be made to the articles before you tonight in order to ensure to be compliant with 3A.
Hi, Pat Ronan, Town Meeting Member, District Seven. The district was designed from start to finish based on feedback we've received from the public, which the task force established early on as its primary goal. There are two key elements to this approach. First, to design and implement a robust, inclusive community engagement process that educates residents, listens to residents, and uses resident feedback to inform decision-making. And second, to recommend proposed zoning to Planning Board, and ultimately to Town Meeting, that first brings Norwood into compliance with the state law, and two, it's driven by Norwood for Norwood. For most of 2023, the task force embarked on a public engagement process to learn from... process to learn from residents about their preferences and priorities for future multifamily housing in Norwood, and how to best comply with Three A. The proposal you see tonight before you is not a reflection of the interests of any one resident, board member, elected official, or even of the task force itself. It's by Norwood for Norwood. So these are the ways that the task force and Planning Board achieve, oh, sorry, next slide, my bad. These are the ways the task force and Planning Board achieve these goals. We designed a public engagement strategy, offering a diversity of options across times, places, modes of meeting like hybrid, in-person, or online, days of the week, et cetera, to offer the public opportunities for participation and learning at every comfort level and availability. Collaboration with local groups, unfocused groups, and co-hosted events boosted overall outreach. A survey, small group discussions, open houses, and the traditional public hearing were all included, as well as a combination of all available media and individual meetings with residents. Next slide, please. Overall, we were pleased with what we accomplished. Nearly twenty events were held, over one hundred survey responses documented, and over two hundred and seventy participants participated. With recent town meeting info sessions, this is likely closer to three hundred. At small group discussions held over the summer, attendees were divided into small groups and led through a series of discussion prompts. Groups talked about the parts of Norwood they loved most, the housing needs they felt were unmet in the community, and shared personal stories about housing in Norwood. Participants represented all walks of life, longtime residents, newcomers, seniors, small business owners, property owners, renters, owners, and more. And most people had lived in a variety of housing types over their lifetime, including single-family homes, duplexes, triple-deckers, larger high-rise complexes, dorms, military housing, affordable housing, and more. Although every participant shared their own unique stories and views, with each and everyone, their own unique stories and views with each and everyone valid and heard, there were some themes of consensus that emerged. Turn it over to Ernie. Thank
So everyone at our small group discussions shared their thoughts about Norwood and their concerns about Norwood's future. You know, traffic worries, loss of open space, change in neighborhood character, affordability, and more. You know, some were worried about young people in town, their own children, many sharing, you know, sadness that their children raised in Norwood couldn't afford to return here as adults. Most expressed a strong interest in staying in Norwood, particularly as they age, but worried that their current housing would be too large and unaffordable, or inaccessible if, when mobility challenges arise. Take it from me, I know that. Many, having never experienced housing instability, shared a feeling of gratitude to call Norwood home, wondering how they would have been able to afford if they were searching for housing today. As expected, the love for Norwood is strong. You know, residents love the affordable tax rate, the public services we offer, like the senior center of the library, walkability downtown, vibrant downtown, municipal electrician broadband, diversity, and strong sense of community in our neighborhoods. They all agree that in a perfect Norwood, housing options would include increased options for seniors and people with disabilities, as well as more affordable units across the board. A priority for walkable housing in complete neighborhoods, with housing that is closer to amenities like stores, parks, jobs, emerged. There was support for green space and sustainable building. Participants were interested in smaller living options like condos appropriate for downsizing. Support for housing, especially deeply affordable housing like that offered by the Norwood Housing Authority, was also a theme throughout our conversation. Thank you.
Sarah?
Aren't they great? I'm lucky to be able to work with such a fantastic boards and committees. So the next challenge was to translate all of these community priorities into creating this proposed MCMOD, or MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. Since it was clear that multifamily housing should be near transit, commercial uses, and pedestrian-friendly areas, with the single neighborhoods remaining exactly as they currently are. The task force identified districts near all three train stations that contain parcels that are mostly zoned manufacturing, but otherwise near less compatible uses like residential. Parcels that are good candidates for redevelopment being vacant or underutilized land, and/or parcels that are currently used as multifamily housing already. The proposed district locations encourage reinvestment in key areas of town in ways that are more compatible with existing land uses. Increase tax revenue for the town and support the local economy by creating more vibrant neighborhoods with high walkability to small businesses. Next slide. The proposed overlay district is to have three sub-districts, each with distinct dimensional requirements that reflect the existing neighborhoods, which are different: Norwood Central, Norwood Depot, and the Windsor Gardens. Each parcel in these sub-districts have been carefully studied and selected with great intention. Compliance here for Three A is a technical balancing act between compliance measures, so each parcel included here serves a purpose towards meeting that goal, and also towards honoring the public's feedback on needs and interests for the town. We feel the proposal outlined in this report is a thoughtful middle-of-the-road proposal. It meets the state's requirements while keeping strong dimensional controls to deliver attractive, compatible buildings that meet the needs of the community. Next slide. So some key elements of the dimensional requirements in the bylaw before you. These dimensional requirements, again, were selected to really reflect current conditions. It's important to note that this, in addition to that aforementioned unit capacity, does necessitate a slight bump above the minimum required land area of fifty acres. The proposed district is about seventy-eight acres, plus seven to ten more or so of land tied up in roadways and train tracks. That's out of an eligible land area of eight hundred and sixty acres. The setbacks are, again, different for each sub-district and reflective of the existing community. So an example of that, Norwood Depot has a five-foot front and side setback, which is consistent with the central business district zoning that already exists. That's to keep your, your buildings kind of nice and tight to the sidewalk and promote kind of a walkable and activated streetscape. Norwood Central, however, has a twenty-foot setback, and it requires that the tallest part of the building must be an additional twenty feet further. That's called a step back. And what that does is it protects the residential neighbors across the street, on Lenox Street, from potentially imposing heights. It kind of scales back that increase in height, so that it looks more modest from the sidewalk. The proposed building heights are also similar to existing zoning in all three sub-districts, with one exception. The bylaw does provide for three bonus categories. Bonus is a commonly-used zoning tool to incentivize a developer to go above and beyond in meeting certain public interest priorities. So in this case, we've assigned bonuses rewarding one additional floor of building height in exchange for three things that are really important to the community. One is significantly increased affordability. Another is significantly increased and improved stormwater design, above and beyond what's required. And the third one is about stacked parking. It awards that bonus to a project that has stacked or underground parking and returns the square footage that would have been that paved surface lot to green open space. Next slide, please. Some key elements of design requirements here. These really respond to public feedback on sustainable development, and specifically traffic concerns, which is a super-common and very reasonable concern when discussing any redevelopment. The proposed zoning is designed to mitigate traffic increases in a few ways. The districts are one hundred percent, not ninety percent as required, but a hundred percent within a half-mile from the train station, and most of it is a lot closer to the train stations than that. Manufacturing parcels were chosen so that any redevelopment there replaces commercial and tractor-trailer traffic that might be inappropriate on residential streets like Lenox Street. The elements here were designed for the buildings to attract residents that are less car-dependent. Reduced parking requirements is a big part of that, but so is mandatory bicycle storage, and the locations of the district being proximate to stores and shops, and encouraging more residents to live there that are less car-dependent. Next slide, please. Some key elements of the environmental protections that are built into this proposed bylaw. The geographic district was selected to encourage redevelopment of industrial and manufacturing land. That does increase green and open space significantly from what's already there. A handful of the existing parcels that are ripe for redevelopment in these areas are paved out to all corners of the lot. So that would represent an improvement, not only on green space, but also on the stormwater management improvements that would be improved above and beyond existing conditions there. And sustainable design principles are promoted throughout. This really encourages development that's walkable, energy-efficient, provides for green space, and that mixed use promotes walkable neighborhoods and sustainable growth. These requirements really respond to that public feedback we received on preserving open space, improving stormwater management and flood mitigation, and generally creating a more resilient Norwood. Next slide. Finally, addressing community needs. The housing stock in Norwood is mostly older and inaccessible due to stairwells, walk-up units, and more.
Excuse me, Ms. Dixon. Do you need more time?
Just five minutes.
Five minutes. Can we have a motion for Mr. Groh? And Ms. Taylor is seconding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, another five.
Thank you. So accessibility was a big, a big concern that was expressed in our public process. So with few options for seniors and people with mobility concerns, we really tried hard to encourage building heights that by virtue of the building code would naturally offer more accessible units. So typically, in a building that's three stories or more, there's a requirement for an elevator. And of a certain scale at three stories or more, there's a requirement that so many of them be fully ADA compliant. So that was an intention there. For affordability, Norwood currently does not have any inclusionary zoning for incomes below eighty percent of the area median income. And so one, again, feature that was baked in here was that affordability bonus. So not only are all developments required to have affordable units set aside, ten percent of the units for developments between eight and fifteen, and then sixteen units or more require twenty percent to be deed-restricted for income-eligible households. That's at eighty percent of the AMI. It goes above and beyond the state's standard of ten percent. But we also offer this bonus, which would be awarded if the developer deed-restricted an additional five percent at fifty percent of the area median income. So what that does is it creates more deeply affordable housing, which at that level does not exist in Norwood, certainly on the private market. Next slide, please. A lot of people fairly have questions about how this will impact town services. These are great questions. We've done a lot of research to try to prepare and make sure that this proposal does not go above and beyond what the town reasonably has the capacity to absorb. We expect that it will have a positive impact on tax revenue when we look back at the tax revenue increases for similar conversions of properties like Avalon or Regal Lofts, which were formerly manufacturing some degree of vacancy. We saw significant annual tax revenue increases for those. It's beneficial, especially when you consider that improvements to the infrastructure like sidewalks, improved tie-ins to sewer and water, improvements to drainage are usually funded privately by the developers. Site plan review by the Planning Board will continue to exist for any projects that come out of this proposal, and traffic studies are typically required as part of that process. It's smart to be concerned about local impacts to the school budget as well and planning to meet those needs. As baby boomers age and younger generations are either moving out of state or having none or fewer kids, statewide, you see general declines in school enrollment, which has led to neighborhood school consolidation in towns around us. Ours, on the other hand, has been relatively stable, which ensures continued state funding. The district, as proposed, spreads out the impacts on our schools over a larger area by including these three sub-districts, which mitigates heavy impacts on any one particular elementary school. Next slide, please. I'm looking forward to answering everybody's questions, but I figured I'd include a couple of the most frequently asked ones at all of our engagement events. This first question, will all the new units be apartments? No. We cannot regulate whether new housing is ownership or rental. That's a market choice to meet the demand. The second question is, why is this overlay district seventy-eight acres when we only have to include a minimum of fifty? Fair question. As you can probably tell by now, compliance is a complicated equation with many inputs. Reducing the land area will likely require some adjustment of dimensional requirements to meet the minimum unit capacity requirement, as well as meeting the community goals for neighborhood consistency and open space. The intent in creating a district that exceeds the fifty-acre requirement was to spread that unit capacity over a larger area, allowing us to zone for projects that reflect those community priorities. In this case, more modestly-sized buildings with maximum building heights similar to what's already allowed, as well as increases in open green space on the lots. This reinforces consistency in neighborhoods where multifamily housing and comparably-sized buildings already exist. This is the kind of comprehensive, smart planning that we've heard town meeting prioritize when it reviewed site-specific zoning proposals in recent years. And finally, how much redevelopment can we realistically expect to see built as a result of this, and when? There's fewer than five parcels totaling about six acres that are vacant lots with a high probability of redevelopment in the next three to five years, resulting in approximately three hundred potential units of housing. And just for reference, what does that look like? Upland Woods has two hundred and sixty-two units. Of the remaining land, many parcels currently contain multifamily housing, and there would be no economic incentive for those parcels to redevelop under this bylaw. And of the rest, redevelopment could occur gradually over the next thirty to fifty years as buildings or businesses reach obsolescence or not at all. In closing, the task force and Planning Board prioritized creation of a modest proposal that meets the state law, addressing a community need for housing and reinvestment in places that make sense, while still preserving the parts of Norwood that we love and protecting its future. We look forward to answering questions and engaging in more discussion with town meeting on these articles. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This is not going to surprise anyone. We have a list, a lengthy list of registered speakers. So what I would like to do in order to keep things moving, first of all, we do have the mics out there. I'm actually going to call the first speaker and then the speaker that follows, and if you can position yourself near a microphone, whether it's the one in the back or the one over here, if you're the next speaker up, we will move it along. You also, if someone has already said what you wanted to say, you can pass as a registered speaker. We will exhaust the registered speakers, and then we will go to, to anyone else up until the time that debate is stopped. So with that, our first registered speaker is Nick Groh, District Seven, and our second registered speaker is Bob Donnelly, District Five. So Mr. Donnelly, if you can position yourself near a mic.
Nicholas Groh, District Seven. So Amanda and I live one block away from the central proposed, central Norwood district, and I can see it from my house, actually. So I mention that to you so that you know that I'm directly impacted by this proposal. This article in the map are the committee's attempt to comply with the Three A law that, with proper setbacks and proper space and greenery requirements and things of that nature. And I'd like us all to remind, like to remind us all that the Three A law has the support of our state reps, multiple political parties, and multiple governors. I also wish to commend the committee on all your hard work. I see it, we all see it, and so do many others, and I'm truly grateful for your efforts. I wanted to speak tonight for three facts that I've heard, spoken, and unfortunately repeated. The first one is I've heard is that, I've heard the statement, move the density to Norwood, to Windsor Gardens as a, as a potential solution to this proposal. And I believe that does not comply with the mass- And I believe that does not comply with the mass guidelines for this law. And I quote from their webpage, it says, "For the purposes of compliance with Section 3A, a multifamily zoning district should be a neighborhood-scale district, not a single development site on which the municipality is willing to permit a particular multifamily project." End quotes. And Windsor Gardens, in this case, would be a single project. And this idea creates a single development site, putting density in one location on the fringe of town. And it's also just a bad idea. It would put all the traffic coming into town for people who are looking for services such as dentists and doctors and grocery visits and things like that when they're not at their jobs. The second thing I want to talk about is that I've heard claims that this is a rushed process and that there was not sufficient community input. And this has been in the papers and this has been on social media for the last 18 months to multiple years, right? We've all had a chance to volunteer on the committee, to attend any of the many public sessions that we've had presented to us, participate in the survey that was sent out. We could even email the town planner. We've all had chances to give our opportunities for feedback, so this was not rushed. So that statement is false. The third thing I want to talk about is this, I've heard the statement that this will change the character of Norwood, right? And this statement's been made many times by many people over many projects. I've heard it over and over here in this Town Meeting. And that statement is just not false, it's just false. You know, we, Town Meeting, represent our town's character. And other projects didn't change our town, didn't change the character of our town. And I don't think this will either. So in summary, tonight, we're attempting to do our part to progress this change in zoning here in Norwood. And without adequate supply of multifamily zoning here in Norwood, Amanda and I wouldn't have been able to move here. And maybe some of you wish that hadn't happened, I don't know, but... But the facts are, the committee has worked really hard and made this proposal based on community feedback in a responsible way. And I, as someone who live in and represent District 7, who can see this district from my house, support this proposal, and I ask you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grow. Mr. Donnelly, and next up is going to be Resident Jay Struthers.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bob Donnelly, District 5, Town Meeting member, member of the Board of Selectmen. So the proposal and the consideration tonight is a result of nearly 18 months of research, community outreach, and input. The committee established jointly by the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, they worked diligently to understand the law and its implications and how it could be best complied with. Public input revealed a desire in the community to address housing issues that exist in Norwood and across the Commonwealth. This resulted in the proposed bylaw before you tonight, which has the support of the 3A Committee, the Planning Director, approval from the majority of the Planning Board, as well as the support of the majority of the Board of Selectmen. In recommending this bylaw, the committee recognized the need to both comply with the State's Communities Act while also addressing the need for additional multifamily housing with zoning improvements in the Norwood Central and Norwood Depot sub-districts. And by doing so, give Norwood the ability to encourage redevelopment of parcels that are vacant or currently have aging manufacturing and industrial structures. The law identifies, the proposed bylaw identifies, the areas of town where housing redevelopment is most appropriate and needed along the MBTA commuter station corridor right here in downtown. By including three sub-districts over 78 acres, we spread out the density of the units per acre. Building dimensions cited in the proposed law are conservative, with building height restrictions and more open space. Reducing the acreage will result in larger, denser sub-districts. You may hear proposals, Mr. Grow mentioned it earlier, that suggest that one district bear most of the load, that is, for the hypothetical build-out. That's Windsor Gardens. This could result in allowing the owner, developer of Windsor Gardens, to develop structures much higher, much larger than what is proposed on the bylaw and what exists today at Windsor Gardens. Currently, Windsor Gardens has over 900 units. If you focus 3A compliance there, the hypothetical unit build-out would be nearly 2,000 units. Windsor Gardens is approximately 60 years old and was purchased for $270 million just as recently as 2019. The owner could determine that it is financially viable to redevelop the complex over time to replace the three-story buildings and open space that exist there today with much higher and larger building because zoning would allow for it. And think about what that says about Norwood. Instead of focusing development on vacant and old industrial parcels for new housing development downtown, where we have two MBTA stations, we would cite proposed zoning in the area of town least represented in Norwood. If you look around, how many Town Meeting members reside at Windsor Gardens? How many members of boards and commissions in town reside at Windsor Gardens? Yes, it would likely result in paper compliance, but it would do nothing in the area of any kind of meaningful redevelopment. We would essentially be setting up a sub-district in an area where residents of the complex have very little influence in town matters. We have also had some suggest that we should only meet minimal compliance and await the completion of the master plan to recommend the use of the parcels in Central and Depot sub-districts. As a member of the Master Steering Planning Committee and an advocate for the town investing in a master plan, I do disagree with that. The approach used by the committee, the Planning Board and the Planning Director, is substantially the same as what a master plan would do. Essentially, for the three sub-districts that are proposed here, a master plan approach to planning was used. Community-based outreach and input, input from businesses, data collection, economic feasibility analysis, and numerous public information sessions over an 18-month period. This can be considered a master plan for the specific areas located within these three sub-districts. The proposed bylaw will lead to the redevelopment of older industrial parcels to housing. We know there are three potential proposals that could result in redevelopment. Housing complexes, as Ms. Dixon mentioned earlier, on parcels that are vacant and underutilized result in structures that contribute to the ability of the town to generate needed revenue. Avalon, over $600,000 in property taxes annually. 129 Galveston Street, the Regal Press Building, over $60,000. Far more revenue generated from those parcels than their previous status as commercial and industrial parcels. The East Earl Street property, as well as other properties in this sub-district, have the potential to generate substantially more tax revenue than the current mostly industrial use.
Excuse me, Mr. Donnelly, do you need more time?
10 seconds.
10 seconds? Well, I think we can give you 10 seconds. I can vote that one.
The East Earl Street parcel generates about $50,000 of tax revenue today. If you consider it developed as a modern housing complex, it will generate probably one and a half, two times that amount. So thank you, Madam Moderator, and I hope the Town Meeting does support the proposed bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly, Mr. Struthers. And next up is Ben Moser.
Good evening.
And Mr. Struthers, can you introduce yourself and give your address as a resident? I think you're at Windsor Gardens, as a matter of fact, right?
That is correct, and it's the topic of my talk. So yes, my name is Jay Struthers. I've been a resident of Windsor Gardens for five years. This is my first Town Meeting, so please be nice. So there have been a lot of deliberations about this bylaw over the past year or so and has brought up some talk about renters like myself. So I would like to briefly share my background to paint an accurate picture because I believe there is a uniqueness to Norwood that attracts renters who become active and engaged members of the community who ultimately contribute to the fabric of the town. So I was put in a bind when my apartment lease was suddenly not renewed. So I simply just picked the commuter rail town closest to my new offices in Westwood and Foxborough. And taking the train to Boston to connect with others in the industry was my secret weapon for my career. And it gave me invaluable knowledge gain that helped me advance. So why didn't I just move to Boston then? Well, I work in medical software, so you can guess by that and by my appearance that I'm fairly nerdy. So my vibe is for a simple, quiet, mid-sized town. And I found that in Norwood, where I could go on a hike in the Blue Hills or on one of the Norwood Trails, or see the art at the Space Center, or have a bite at one of the intimate local restaurants downtown. And conversely, my personal nightmare would be living in the middle of an insane southeast St. Patrick's Day like what happened last week. And as I lived here, I realized that those two advantages of the town are seen in the character of the people. It's a marriage of ambition, of the trains, that you don't see in a town this small. And that is combined with a respectfulness that you don't see in towns that are much larger than Norwood. And being in Windsor Gardens, I would see that some people, some people would leave, but a lot would stay. And it was that Norwood character of ambition and respectfulness that was common among the people who stayed. And these are the traits that I admire and I hope to embody. And I believe that welcoming more people like this will be a benefit to all. So that brings us to tonight's motion. And I know that many of you have been deeply embedded in the works of 3A, but if anyone's new, you've had a wonderful presentation elucidating it. But I'd like to highlight three points that I enjoyed and I think are particularly important. So the law on paper allows for up to 2,045 new units, but key, it doesn't force us to, it only allows it, it doesn't compel us. In fact, there's really no way for our town to come close to the total given the way that these districts are strategically designed to incorporate existing multifamily, like my home in Windsor Gardens and in Avalon. The new units are likely to come on parcels that are currently vacant or rundown industrial buildings. So lots that aren't really being put to use anyway. And second, some people tonight may focus on the total district acreage, but town officials say, in reality, only six of those acres will be redeveloped in the coming years. And because of the overall size of the districts, these six acres can be less dense, having more green space, and ultimately will limit the impact of surrounding neighborhoods. So it's not an overdevelopment as great as you think it would be. And most importantly, if we vote to approve this plan, we will be complying with state law, meaning our state funding will be in good standing, and we will avoid costly legal action. At the same time, we'll revitalize a few underutilized parts of town that will help create more housing opportunities for people like me who are proud to call Norwood home. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Struthers. All right, Mr. Moser and Elizabeth Hestad, we've got you up next.
Hi, Ben Moser, District 7. So this is in response to a housing crisis. The Act itself was in response to a housing crisis. And when I, when my son was just born, like just a handful of months old, we were renting at the time, and our landlord decided, no, you're not anymore. I had a new job, I was trying to figure out where I fit in there, I was trying to figure out how to be a parent, and then I had to try to navigate the real estate market around here real, 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 real quick. So I know how much it sucks to try to navigate a housing crisis. I'm fine now, thanks for asking. We're, I live over near Norwood Center, close to where this redevelopment would be. I walk around a lot, I get to walk to the train when I have to go into town for work. I walk by the train station when I just need to stretch my legs when I'm working at home. And I see the empty parcels and I see the unused building space, the unused factory space, and it could be so much more. And the requirements, again, from the state are in response to that housing crisis. And this is our chance to help ease that while using that space in a really smart way and in a way that was very meticulously and very carefully plotted out. We saw the work that went into it over an 18-month process. We've seen developers look at some of these parcels before, and what we told them was, we really don't like the developers coming in and doing their zoning for us. We want this done the right way. And I don't think there's more right away than how this process went. 18 months of community involvement, community questions, community answers. Again, it's very careful and meticulous work. And so I think that this deserves our support as written, and I think it deserves better than an 11th-hour amendment trying to undermine all of that hard work. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Ms. Hestad and Mr. Raphanos, you're up next. Kevin, actually, Mr. Raphanos is behind you, so maybe you might...
Hi, Elizabeth Hestad, District 7. I just wanted to kind of go off of what other people said and include, why should we do this zoning change now? And the reason is because there are people in Norwood now who need housing. And every month, or six months, that we kick this zoning down the road is another month or six months that people are living in unsafe homes, in overcrowded homes, and in their cars. I would like to share three stories from residents that I've been given as I've spoken to them or listened to select board meetings. The first comes from a fellow dance mom. Our kids go to, they're in dance at Norwood Rec together. Michelle, she is a resident and a DCF social worker. She specializes in helping kids transition out of foster care. These are kids who cannot rely on living with their family. It takes them more than six months to find an open apartment. This is her entire job, is just trying to navigate eastern Massachusetts rental market. Another dance mom, Emily, rents out the bottom floor of her triple-decker. She and her family live on the upper two floors. She said that she received over 70 applications for the one-bedroom unit that they have. She said that the number of families with children applying to a one-bedroom broke her heart. The people are so desperate for housing that they're willing to crowd into a home too small for them. And then lastly, I listened to Carrie McCarthy from the Senior Center give a presentation to the Board of Selectmen in February, and she talked about seniors living in unsafe housing, needing more accessible units, including elevators, seniors living in hotels and in their cars. She said that they have nowhere else to go. Some of them need accessible housing and can't move into senior-only housing because their grandchildren live with them. So not only do they need accessible housing, they need it to be family-friendly, and they need it to be in Norwood so their kids can stay in the district. I really hope that as we make these zoning plans, we think about the people who will actually be affected and the people who actually need housing in Norwood that are here now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hestad. Mr. Raphanos?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Moderator, District 9.
And you're Gregory...
Gregory Raphanos.
I know you, but maybe other people don't.
I actually have a couple of questions. One for Ms. Dixon in reference to, as I understand it, there's only 12 out of 177 districts that have passed this so far. Is that true?
Ms. Dixon, you want to take that? And just while we're waiting here, John Schalby is the next speaker, who may not be here soon, Ms. Bodenhoffer will go. Go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
Yes, so only a handful of communities are in full compliance at the moment. Part of that is because of the way the state staggered deadlines. So the rapid transit communities had to come into compliance by the end of '23. The commuter rail communities like ours have to come in by the end of '24, and then the small towns and adjacent communities at the end of '25. So it's kind of a rolling rally for compliance.
Follow-up, Mr. Raphanos?
I'm sorry?
Follow-up?
Yes, please, thank you. So do you know why Boston and Cambridge were not included in this?
Ms. Dixon?
So Boston does not follow Chapter 40A, the zoning act. They have their own zoning regulations that they follow, so they were exempt. There are a couple of other communities, kind of here and there throughout eastern Massachusetts, that are also exempt. Like randomly, Avon somehow is exempt. Like randomly, Avon somehow is exempt. But I believe it has something to do with the way they follow zoning codes.
Thank you.
Another, Mr. Rofanos?
I'm sorry, can I have one more question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I guess this one would be for our town manager. Is we expecting an override to pay for the additional items we'll have to pay for?
Mr. Mizuka?
You know, usually, thank you, Madam Moderator, usually with zoning, I should be able to sit here and not be on the hot seat. At the risk of talking about whether we'll need an override in a few years, if we're trying to tie an override specifically to growth related to 3A, the answer's a little bit murky. I don't think so. Our financial condition and where we're going in the next few years is likely to be somewhat unchanged negatively or positively, remembering that we live under Prop 2.5, and new growth helps to generate the town revenue. Without new, without a significant amount of new growth, the 2.5% increase in the tax levy every year generally does not work. It doesn't work for most municipalities. So going with 3A, and I don't think it's an option to go or not go, but however we do it, it's not going to have an impact on whether or not we need an override in a couple of years to maintain our services.
But there would be, excuse me?
You have a follow-up, Mr. Rofanos?
But you do expect at some point there will be expenses that we will incur with this?
So the short answer to that is yes, the longer answer is if we want to say that, does housing create costs? The answer is yes, but every housing unit creates a cost for the town. And there's no housing unit that is cash positive for a town, whether it's an apartment or a single-family home. Particularly in Norwood, we are able to take the benefit of the fact that we have a huge commercial base, which keeps our tax base low. But even a, in, this is absent the politics, even a residential subdivision with single-family homes realistically can't pay for itself and can't pay for the children that it puts into a school district. The cost to educate a child, the cost for services, is generally not able to be paid by just residential homes. That's why with our commercial base, you'll notice in other towns, the residential rate is significantly higher. Certainly, I'd like to say we're just more efficient and better at what we're doing. But the reality is, we have more commercial bases. Residential homes, generally in suburbs, do not cover the cost it provides them in services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rofanos, Ms. Bodenhoffer. Sorry for breaking up date night back there, by the way.
Myev Bodenhoffer, District Nine. I asked to speak tonight because the last time that we discussed changing zoning on Lennox Street, I had spoken against that zoning change. I said at the time that I was in favor of the proposed project, but that I wanted us as a community to think more about what that zoning would really mean. And I was in favor of the idea of some sort of transition zone between the hospital area and the residential area. But I didn't want it to just be zoning for one lot. I understood that it didn't meet the legal requirement of spot zoning, but it looked a lot like spot zoning to me. So I want to thank the Planning Board and the Task Force for doing the work and really thinking about zoning and developing a plan for a larger transition area. And I think that I'm very much in favor of this. I think that this would allow that project that we talked about, what was it, a year or two ago? But it's a more comprehensive plan for zoning, and I think this is a much better way to do zoning in town. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenh... Mr. Ronan, you're right in the area here. We have you next. And right after Mr. Ronan is Resident Alex De Silva, if you can put yourself near a mic.
Hello, Pat Ronan, District Seven. So we've talked about the costs of housing. I think we should look at the cost of no housing. So there's a three- to five-year waitlist at the Norwood Housing Authority for elders and people with disabilities. Do you know who pays for people who need subsidies for housing? Do you know how much it costs to put people in homeless shelters? It's public costs. Norwood pays for that. Housing insecurity is linked to learning challenges, food insecurity. We talk a lot about the school budget, you know? And a good percentage of our students here in Norwood are dealing with economic disadvantages. There is a cost to that. I've heard some people say that Norwood has done enough. I'm just gonna, I've already shared this with a couple of people. But when I moved to town four years ago, I love, I love Norwood. It's got so many cool aspects to it. But I remember walking my son around the downtown there, the train station, and I saw all these industrial lots and vacant parking lots. And I swear, I thought that there was like an endangered species situation happening here because there would be no other logical reason why a town would not develop those lots. Norwood has a downtown that is so unique and charming. And to then go from that and have this stretch of, frankly, the type of developments you usually see zoned for the outskirts of a community is just a tremendous waste. And that, never mind bringing more housing close to the train stations, that's just smart development. Having four parking lots next to a train station is going back in time. So I hope that you will support this article. There is a cost to not doing this. They might not be in this room, but it's there, and we do pay for it one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ronan. Mr. De Silva, and after is Andrew Crump, if you can position yourself near a microphone. Mr. De Silva?
Hey, oh, wow, that's powerful, sorry, sorry. Alex De Silva, District Nine, and previous speakers have touched on...
Actually, Mr. De Silva, you would give your address, your resident, I believe.
Oh, sorry, 16 Prescott Road, right off Dean Street. Previous speakers have touched on the technical aspects of Article Four, so I'll keep this short and sweet. I've lived in Norwood all my life, you know, love it. And the older I've gotten, the more I've realized, one, how unique and special the town is, and, two, how increasingly impossible it is for me, not just me, people of my generation younger, to afford to continue living here. I'm very lucky in some ways. I've been able to, you know, live with my parents as I build up money, and I've thankfully, finally, have saved enough to possibly start looking at places in town. But vast majority of my peers have not been able to do that. They've had to move further out west, down South Rhode Island, north to New Hampshire, further out of state. And for the 30-plus years I've lived here, I've watched housing prices go up, bend up, bend up, bend up, with not very much development to meet that demand. My parents first bought the house we live in back in 1992. And, you know, they were not, they're not yuppies by any means, just regular, working, middle-class couple. And they bought it for $150,000. Now houses in that same neighborhood, just regular, single-story ranches, nothing fancy, nothing special, they're going for three-quarters of a million. They're going for over $800,000, just to really underline how dire things have gotten. And I can understand some people's trepidation. Some of these changes do sound big on their face. But I can speak from experience when I say, we cannot afford to wait anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva. Andrew Crump? Okay, doesn't, don't see him? All right, Mr. Brody? We have you next up, and I know Mr. Brody has some questions, Ms. Dixon. And right after Mr. Brody would be Mr. Giode.
Steve Brody, District Four, thank you, Madam Moderator. First, I want to commend Sarah Dixon and the 3A Task Force for leading the effort for Norwood to comply with this 3A law. Now I have some questions. On page 16, the table of use, page 16 in the warrant, number three, says, "Bus or railroad passenger station." And for the McMod on the far right says, "No." But Windsor Gardens already has a train station. So I'd like to know, Madam Moderator, why is no train station? Why is there an N for the McMod?
Okay, Ms. Dixon, you want to take that, please?
So this would be for any new transit stations. Obviously, all three of these sub-districts already have some transit access, and this would be relating to any, any new structures for that use.
I understand, but I'm concerned if Windsor Gardens is rebuilt, for them to comply with the zoning, they have to do away with the train station, which would nullify the purpose of the zoning. So I'm wondering, maybe there should be some mention somehow.
Ms. Dixon, you want to take that?
Sure. So any uses that are in existence before a zoning bylaw potentially changes that use is allowed to continue. Some might know that as grandfathering, we call that pre-existing non-conforming now. And what that does is allow you some protections to not only continue to be a train station, or whatever the use may be, but it does give you some protections about changing in the future as well. We have sections in our bylaw that allow for any sort of changes or expansions to pre-existing non-conforming uses. And most of them would require some sort of special permit from the ZBA. But there is an avenue and a provision for that to happen.
Okay, thank you. Now, number four, taxi officer stand, I think that would be desirable in any of those districts.
Is there a question, Mr. Brody? What's the question?
Why isn't a taxi stand allowed in any of the districts?
Ms. Dixon, you want to take that?
So typically, when choosing these uses, we try to achieve some consistency with other comparable districts. And in this case, these types of uses for this type of residential district are not allowed. For example, in the Space Center Overlay District, which is a multifamily housing zoning district that was approved by town meeting last year, a taxi stand is not an allowable use. So this was drafted to try to be consistent with that.
Okay, thank you. Now on page 35, paragraph H4, here's my concern, where eight to 15 units, if a builder comes in, builds eight to 15 units, they can do 10% affordable, which I'm concerned might throw us into the 40B. I'm wondering if they should also be not less than 20%, please?
Ms. Dixon, you want to take that?
Yeah, this is a great question. So for the purposes of complying with state law, the state made it very clear that if you were to go above 10%, so 10% or less didn't require any special review. But if you, as a community, decided that you wanted to require more than 10% affordability in any particular project, you had to be able to justify that with an economic feasibility analysis, basically saying that in your particular market, that requirement wouldn't make housing unbuildable or unaffordable, uneconomic for the developer to be able to comply with. And so we did have an economic feasibility analysis done by a third-party consultant. We obtained a grant from MHP in order to fund that consultant. And the consultant took, she did pro forma review, so kind of reviewing the figures for actual development projects in our area, figuring out how to pencil a project that might happen in Norwood. And our recommendations are consistent with what she found. Originally, the first draft of this did require 20%. But she said that the numbers, especially with increased land costs and the cost of construction, just didn't work as well for those smaller projects. So that's why it was adjusted to 10% for the below 16, and then 20 for the higher.
What is the 40B threshold, please?
So any unit developed under the inclusionary zoning here would be added to our SHI, and it would count on our inventory. For 40B specifically, any building that has 25% of its overall unit set aside as affordable housing, if it's a rental property, then all of the units in the building get counted on the SHI. It's a little bit of SHI math, it's kind of clever. So these would result in not quite 25%. It would be 20 at the max. However, the bonus that the Task Force wrote in here that would award an extra story of building height would be for an additional 5%, which could get a property to that 25% where all of the units would count and set us significantly forward on the SHI.
Okay, my initial reaction, I'll admit I'm for the bylaw, but my initial reaction, going way, way back when I saw this, is the state itself is not consistent with its own housing requirement. When it allowed for the MBTA, only what, 10%, whatever it is, was below the 25% that it requires for a town to be safe from 40B.
All right, Mr. Brody, do you need more time?
Yeah, just two more minutes.
Hold on. Mr. Hearn, you're moving to give him two more minutes? And I see Mr. Lane is seconded. All in favor? Closed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, last, page 33, paragraph 9.5G6. And this confused me, where it says, "Detailed in section 9.5.G6", but that's exactly the paragraph that we're reading. This is at the bottom of page 33.
It's the waivers section, Mr. Brody?
Bonuses.
Bonuses, okay. So section six...
Public interest is detailed in section 9.5.G6, but that's exactly where we are. It should say, maybe it's detailed in this section. That's just editorial suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Brody.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Giode, and Ms. Howard, you're next. But Kevin, if you could bring the mic to Ms. Howard, so she doesn't have to, she's right over there. You don't get, ladies first, Mr. Giode.
Tom Giode, District Six. I was ready to throw Moses away after what I heard tonight, but I got a few things I can add. Please allow me to borrow from a well-known political gaffe. I was against the 3A law before I was for it. I felt strongly that Norwood had enough rental units, accounting for the 5,992 rental units, which is 47% of the total 12,697 housing units, according to the 2020 census. Many of those housing units were mandated by 40B. And I wondered, why were we not given allowance for that 47% already in place? Let's skip part of this here. There was some mention in the information handouts on the September 25th initial engagement session in 2023 that referred that there was possibly some racial component to the zoning that had taken place here in Norwood. And that really turned me off. And I questioned that, why would anybody bring that up when so many white Civil War soldiers died fighting slavery? As a matter of fact, we had 44 Norwood soldiers serve in the Union Army, four of which... As a matter of fact, we had 44 Norwood soldiers serve in the Union Army, four of which did not return home, and they are buried in the Forest Parish Cemetery. And as a veteran, I really resented that. But I think the best reason for restrictive housing was that people like open space. They like elbow room. They don't like crowding. They look what happens in the cities around us, they say, that's not for us. We don't want too much housing in here, and that's their legitimate concern. I was wondering, maybe this is just phase one of the rezoning, and maybe this is the proverbial camel's nose under the tent. So what changed my mind? First, the threats of being sued by the state for non-compliance did not seem worth the cost and effort to resist. Then I witnessed the conduct of the community development and planning board personnel. They conducted engagement sessions with an honest goal, to understand what Norwood people wanted for a change in housing, to meet the needs of a shortage of affordable housing for all various populations. They allowed people to express their concerns, and even some to deny there was even a problem. But they skillfully proposed what-if scenarios. This approach has been the best of possibly a disastrous outcome, in my opinion. Through their efforts, we will avoid what many of us feared, and I do mean I was part of this group, an abundance of apartments already in crowded areas of downtown. By creating the new MC MOD zoning in areas with multifamily housing already in place, the Norwood Depot and Norwood Central District, Sub-Districts, the net increase in family apartments will be minimal, perhaps 300 in all, most of which will be near Windsor Gardens. Knowing that the new 3A law was a zoning mandate only, the town was able to use the state's rules to our advantage. After studying the new zoning maps for the Norwood Depot, Norwood Central, and Windsor Gardens Sub-Districts, I concluded that our community development and planning staff have turned gerrymandering into an art form. I also learned that the new multifamily zoning, MCOD, is an overlay, and this really changed my mind. It's an overlay district, which means that the owner of the property in the new MCOD district can build any structure allowed by the underlying zone on the site. The owner does not have to build multifamily housing on that site, and that totally convinced me. In addressing the concern that the MCOD district is 70 acres, 78 acres versus the recommended minimum 50 acres, there was a fact sheet handed out at the high school meeting on February 28th. If you've got any questions about this, you heard a lot tonight, but this really goes into detail about what this zoning will really do for us. It doesn't do it for anybody else, it does it for this community. So in closing, I thought it was sad that we only had 70 people, but I see the updated number to 270, actually attended the engagement sessions and 100 completed a survey out of a town of 30,000. If anyone does not like Article Four and Article Five, that we found out tonight and has been approved, and it's compliant with the MBTA multifamily zoning law, section 3A, and if you did not attend any engagement sessions or complete the survey, please carefully consider how you vote tonight, which I hope will be for Article Four and Article Five.
Thank you, Mr. Gyo. Ms. Howard? And after Ms. Howard is Mr. Slater.
Judith Howard, District Three. Agree or disagree? The MBTA community's multifamily zoning requirement is a most horrible law for several reasons, and here are some. It is mandatory, not optional. This is a top-down political maneuver by the governor and the legislature that concentrates power and profits into the hands of the state and developers, which should make anyone uncomfortable. Instead of "we, the people," it is "we, the government." What does this remind you of? Number two, the law stresses to allow multifamily housing as a matter of right. Why? For Norwood, it allows 2,045 units. That is at least 2,000 more individuals, and who knows how many others. So the density of Norwood is quite high in comparison with other towns. There is no such thing as affordable housing these days, when the average salary in Norwood is $106,000 and rent for an apartment is $2,500. In many cases, that is about 40% of one's take-home pay. Number four, do you know Boston is exempt from the zoning law, including this section What does this law, what this law does is to move urban development into the suburbs. Every district in Norwood already has two and three acres. It already has affordable housing here and senior housing in numerous complexes. Norwood has done more than its share, as its percentage of apartment units is higher than the percentage of single-family homes. Is this multifamily housing or mixed use or both? What so many consider an asset with three train stations in town, it now appears to be a liability, because Norwood's taxpayers will see a dramatic increase in taxes if this is allowed to come to fruition. Already this year, it's increased 11%. This law allows for parking garages multiple stories high or underground parking garages. And nine, building heights can be four or five stories high, depending upon the development. Changing the aesthetics of this town we all love so much, like Avalon has. Number 10, bonuses will only benefit the developer, who will make an obscene profit for sure, not the public. Number 11, Norwood is small in size. It only has 10.54 square miles, but has a population, as of the last census, of 30,601. Go online and compare the size and population of surrounding towns that have transit, Canton, Dedham, Sharon, Walpole, Westwood, and see the differences. Number 12, an Norwood businessman recently informed me that there are 15 empty apartments in the Crescent Building, right near Norwood Central and Norwood Center, and they have been empty for years. Why? And by the way...
Excuse me, Ms. Howard? Do you need more time?
One more sentence, Madam Moderator.
Go for it.
Thank you. The Commonwealth's full Supreme Judicial Court has agreed to hear the case in October against the town of Milton, who opposes this mandatory law. I thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Mr. Slater and Mr. Hearn, you're up next, after Mr. Slater.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Alan Slater, District Four, member of the Finance Commission and a 40-year resident of Norwood, which I know still means I'm a carpetbagger. First off, I really would like to thank the 3A Committee, and particularly Ms. Dixon, for the amount of time and effort they put into this. I think it speaks well of everyone here in Norwood. This is a measure I'd like to approve. I'd like to see this passed with a strong majority, so Norwood can make a statement. However, I can't approve this proposal unless it's currently drafted. You know, I'm disappointed that the competing interests here in Norwood were unable to reach a compromise. I think that's unfortunate. I think both sides should reach a compromise without sacrificing their bedrock principles to come up with a proposal that would be acceptable to more town meeting members. Let me tell you a couple of the issues that I have some concerns with. I'm also a member of the Master Plan Steering Committee. Within the next few months, we will be beginning a master plan, and in beginning that master planning process for the whole town, I think now the correct approach is to do the minimum to satisfy the state mandate and not prematurely eliminate options. This may mean more than 50 acres, I understand that, but certainly less than 78. The master planning process, which we'll be involved in, will be more involved, more detailed, a more detailed process with much greater public involvement than what's been done to date. Whatever the result of that master plan process is, is okay. If that recommends the same things that's included in this proposal, that's fine, because that's part of a town-wide, long-term, total town-wide master planning process. What I haven't really seen in this process in a lot of detail are the implications on our infrastructure, particularly our schools. Studies have shown that the elementary schools are at capacity now, even when the fifth grade moves to the new middle school. The emphasis to date primarily has been on housing, so that everything else hasn't been studied as closely as it would be in a town-wide master planning process. Next, what I've heard is that some developers are ready to go with projects in these areas proposed for the revised zoning, so why not simply approve these areas? I caution people now to do what is right for Norwood, not is right for a developer. I also disagree with mixed use, primarily in Windsor Gardens. Instead, we should encourage commercial development by supporting our existing establishments, as well as supporting new growth in Norwood Center and South Norwood. You know, when I work in the middle school project, when faced with issues, we take a particular approach. We step back, involve all those that should be, look at all the options, and make a decision. When you do this, this tends to lead to a positive outcome. I suggest that we do the same thing here. Take a step back, send this back to compromise, and read some reasonable, send it back to committee, and read some reasonable compromise. We certainly have time to do this. Approval of this is not required until the end of the year. Let's do this once, and let's do this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Mr. Hearn? And following Mr. Hearn is Mr. Plasko.
David Hearn, District Four. We've heard tonight from several people who are the types of people that this proposal is intended to benefit, in my view, particularly younger people who would like to go out on their own but can't find housing that they can afford. About 10 days ago, the Chamber of Commerce, Boston Chamber of Commerce Foundation, released the results of a survey that it had conducted in the general eastern Massachusetts area that showed that we have a real problem with retaining young people in Massachusetts. And one of the major reasons for that is the cost of housing and the inability of people to find housing. So many of our young people are moving out because they can't afford to live here. And why can't people afford? Because there isn't enough housing. This proposal is not perfect. I don't think there's ever a perfect proposal that can be brought on such a complicated topic. But we have to remember a few things. This is not an option, it's the law. The statute says it shall. The town shall do this. We've heard people say, this is tyranny, this is horrible what the state is doing. I think it's useful to remember that it's the state that created the cities and towns, and it is the state that sets zoning law for the cities and towns, and that tells them what their minimum standards are, and then we can go from there. I don't think that this particular proposal, particularly looking at the parcels that are available for development in the proposed sub-districts, will have a significant negative effect on our town. Oh, it's going to destroy the suburban feeling. You really think it's going to hurt the suburban feeling to turn the Savagrant site or the empty, essentially empty, 25 East Hoyle Street site into housing that we need? It'll bring more people into our town, and every town needs new blood. We may very well hear that, oh, we should get rid of everything but in the Central District, but the Norwood Central Sub-District, but Avalon. That's one of the proposals that has been talked about in the last day or so. That's very possibly going to leave us non-compliant and ignore what we've heard from other speakers about why are these properties sitting vacant? There is a real need here. Well, we heard at the planning board hearing that some of those parcels should be reserved for the medical services overlay district, for the hospital. And I'm speaking particularly to 25 East Hoyle Street, and I will disclose, I represent the owners of that property, who are Norwood people, come from families long involved in the town. They tried to interest Stewart Hospital in that site. Stewart Hospital let a lease go when they used it for parking. They have no need for it. There is no need for medical office space to be built, other than what's being built in the hospital and what otherwise exists. The hospital is being built, and when it gets built, God help us, I hope it does soon, it is rather large compared to most community hospitals. It approaches the size of some of the larger hospitals that we see regionally, and it will have plenty of office space for outpatient care and physician offices. The Guilde Building is 100% leased by Stewart, but only 20% occupied. There's plenty of space there. My clients, the 25 East Hoyle, tried to interest medical offices and similar office use. No takers. What do they hear from the people they've talked to, including Moderna, the Brigham, and others? We're concerned about housing for the people who work for us. Where are the people going to live who come to work for our hospital and for our other businesses, including Moderna? The owner of Mystic Scenic Studio appeared at the planning board hearing and said that his concern was that there are no places for his workers to live in the area, not enough. He has workers come in from Rhode Island, workers come out from Boston that would prefer to live here in Norwood. What this proposal will do, hopefully, will lead to the type of housing that brings those people here with us. I hear comments about the number of rental units we have in the town, and I detect at times a sense, sort of a bias against people who are renters. We have all been renters, pretty much all of us at some point of our lives. And the people that I know who are involved in activities in this town, as town meeting members, as members of committees, as volunteers, many of them are renters.
Excuse me, Mr. Hearn, do you need more time?
I certainly do.
How much more time do you need?
May I have five minutes and hope I don't use it?
All right. Ms. Holmwood is moving to give you five minutes, and we'll have a second from Mr. Miller. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. All right, Mr. Hearn, don't use it all, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It's interesting that several of the people who have spoken in favor of this proposal tonight live in the areas that will be most affected by this proposal, if there are build-outs in these various sub-districts. They're the ones who are going to be affected, and they want it. Mr. Grove said he can see it from his house, and it doesn't bother him. We have heard a suggestion, we may hear more about it, that we should send this back to committee. It needs to be studied more. We heard that in other things in the past. The 259 Lennox Street people were told, go back to planning board. Nothing changed. Then the MBTA law came along, and they think they're waiting in the wings for... Then the MBTA law came along, and I think they're waiting in the wings for that, but they wanted to move forward with that. That's not a reason to vote for it. It's just a comment. On sending things back to committee doesn't necessarily improve things, especially when you look at the process that has been followed here. 18 months of the task force, the Planning Board, the Planning Department, engaging with the public, multiple meetings, focus groups, you know, ads in the newspaper, articles in the newspaper, not just in Norwood, the Boston papers, about this whole topic. This should not be a surprise to anybody. There hasn't been more discussion of an issue in this town in recent memory than what we've had for this. So sending it back doesn't do anything. Compromise? I'm not sure how you compromise zoning bylaws when the zoning bylaw before you is the result of significant engagement by residents, business owners, and others who would be affected. This is, I think, a good response, well thought out, and in a way, pretty clever. The sub-districts are, for the most part, built out, and not likely to have a lot of new development. But the parcels that have been mentioned, I'm thinking of the Norwood Tire parcel, the 25 East Hoyle parcel, and the Savagrant parcel, cry out for something to be done. Something not more industry. Some of them are manufacturing districts. You want to bring back 18-wheelers into those neighborhoods? Or do we build housing, allow for the building of housing, that will help our town? Now, the last thing, well, maybe not the last thing, but anyway.
It's probably going to be the last thing.
It will be the last thing. I never look at my watch, Madam Moderator, so I'm relying on you to keep time. We hear that this is going to have, "Oh, the taxes are going to go up. The schools are going to be overrun." We didn't see the schools overrun when we got 262 units up at Upland Woods. And these properties do not generate enough in taxes now. They will generate more if something is built on them, something new, something compliant, and they don't create a lot of demand. They take out their own trash, they plow their own roadways, they're built to code, they're safer than the buildings most of us live in. I ask you to support this. This is right. It is fair. It is good for the town. It's good for our community. It's good for our Commonwealth. Please vote yes on the proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Mr. Plasko, and after Mr. Plasko is Mr. Pat Schakowsky.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Bill Plasko, District 1 Town Meeting Representative. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, but I'm over here tonight because I was on the minority side of a 3-2 vote on the board's position on this matter, so that's why I've stepped over to the side, to make sure I'm not mistakenly representing the board. While politics of creating the MBTA 3A zoning house, zoning requirements is intertwined with land use, I'm going to try to keep my remarks focused on the proposal. As hot as it is, there's been a lot of discussion tonight, that I'd love the debate, but time is late. The zoning bylaws, what's before us, that's what we should be concerned with tonight, because we're going to take a vote, and if we vote, that's what goes through, and we'll be living with it. My hope is that the comments and suggestions are helpful tonight for the town meeting, and how to comply with the MBTA 3A zoning mandate, and how to move forward. Prior to the passage of the MBTA legislation, oh, Madam Moderator, I know I'm going to need a few minutes. I asked for 20. I haven't timed myself. I hope I'll take a lot less than that, but I don't want to get stopped in the middle as either.
Why don't we do this, Mr. Plasko? You have five. Why don't we give you an additional five, and then we can...
Well, I am going to have a motion as well.
Right, which gives you 10 minutes. So I've got you for 10 minutes, and then we can see if the body will approve.
We're going to go as fast as we can. Thank you, Madam Moderator. So prior to the passage of the MBTA legislation, the town, through its leaders and yourselves, town meeting, recognize that we are at a point in our history that we need to take a good look at who we are, and what we want to be, who we want to be in the future, and what we should do to get there. We created a master plan committee, writing more than $200,000 for, to hire a consultant to help us with that task. It's time that we find a workable solution to 3A requirement that need not divide the community. So we may proceed without our own local planning, without outside interference. We should carefully explore other development tools available to us. We should consider 40R smart growth districts that would provide planned housing, affordable units, as well as cash payments to the town, reducing the area proposed by law, and the developing of the reduced area with 40R instead of 3A zoning, who results in payments to the town around $1,245,000 while reaching the same goals. We could also use the LIP program. That's a local initiative program. It's pretty much similar to a 40B, but we get involved in the beginning. We have much input into what the development will be like, and we're doing two of those right now. One's been through the Selectmen and the State. It's with the zoning board. Hopefully, they're going to approve it soon. It's for a very small number of units. There's a second one that's being discussed now. We'll be waiting to be dealing with that soon, down on the Ward section of Town and Washington Street, small boutique developments that get us affordable housing, that meet our needs, provide housing, but don't leave us with large developments that the town has resisted in the past, has been divided over, has had a housing opportunity plan that recalled for these boutique developments, and it's a smarter way to move forward. While I acknowledge and appreciate the work done by the Director of Community Development and others to present the proposed bylaw before us, I believe it goes too far, and there should be changes made to it. For example, the proposed mixed use should eliminate from Windsor Gardens and Central Business Districts. These are not proper areas for this activity to be allowed. It fails to consider the residential neighbors abutting it, and it's eliminate, and by eliminating mixed use, it allows the heights to be lowered without jeopardizing compliance with the 3A housing mandate. The 3A law was intended to develop multifamily housing, and we should stay focused on that requirement. We are going to ask the question, if we're going to go putting this in Windsor Gardens and Avalon Bay, are we going to come back at another town meeting and rezone so that it can be allowed in Northwest Woods and one up in Norwood Gardens, Old Derby Village? Are we going to open up the whole town? If it's right in these developments, why isn't right in all the others? We are in a rather fortunate, a rather fortunate position in our community, as well as we and some other communities are, because we can comply with the 3A mandate with little immediate impact. It's easy to agree that the three general areas recommended for rezoning comply with the state's laws, and represents the best way to go forward since they already contain multifamily housing. However, the proposed bylaw goes too far, allowing approximately 1,000-plus more units than required, and it covers a much larger area necessary to comply with the law. 78, I think it's now 85 acres versus the 50 that's required. We cannot afford to make these decisions in a vacuum. We need to think about the town's future. We need to understand the totality of the steps we have already taken, in conjunction with the steps we will now take with the 3A requirements. And we must remember and take into consideration the recent Route 1 zoning, the development of the large tract of land at the former Telco or Masonville site on Manhattan Street, and other projects that some of them already have been mentioned that will be coming down the road. These actions are going to all have a significant impact on the development of our future. We need to consider the full impact and move carefully. Most people, I think, that I speak to, I believe, realize that things will change over time, but they want it to happen at a moderate rate, a controlled rate, and with good planning. While I believe a few amendments should be considered, the most important, I believe, should address reducing the number of acres it covers and the number of units that it might build. Therefore, Madam Moderator, I would like to offer a motion to amend, if we can put that up on the screen. This motion, I guess I should read it, Madam Moderator?
Yes, please.
Okay. Moved to amend the motion to amend the Norwood zoning bylaw as offered. A motion by William Plasko, seconded by Alan Howard, by deleting the, deleting in Section 9.5B.3 the following after the words, "sub-districts," all of which are shown on the MCMAOD boundary map, are established by this Section 9.5. A, Windsor Gardens Subdistrict. B, Norwood Gardens Subdistrict. C, Norwood Depot District. Inserting in place the following after "sub-districts," all of which are shown on the attached maps and established by this Section 9.5. Windsor Gardens Subdistrict, Commons at Windsor Gardens, multifamily housing development located off Wall Post Street. B, Norwood Central Subdistrict, Avalon Bay, multifamily housing development, Frontage on Guile Street and Pumpton Ave. C, Norwood Depot Subdistrict, the areas between Lenox Street and MBTA line from Manhattan Street to Road Ave, and including the Norwood Crossing, multifamily development at the corners of Railroad Ave and Central Street. And you can see those three areas.
Those areas, before you say that, and Mr. Howard, I believe Alan Howard is seconding?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. So these areas are actually the same, except for Central. Central is reduced from what is being proposed by the Planning Board to include just Avalon Bay We could go to the next slide, please. This is the Windsor Gardens project or development. It's 46-plus acres. It has a potential of providing 1,964 units. And again, that information is from the Department of, our Department of Community Development. Next slide, please. Central, we're reducing, we're suggesting reducing it to just Avalon Bay. That's eight acres, a potential of 344 units, again, based on assessments records and the Department of Community Development information. And next slide, Norwood Depot, five acres with a potential of 215 units, based on information filed from the departments, again. That's a total, next slide, please. That's a total in the proposal from the Planning Board of 78, or I think now it's 85 acres, 3,397 potential units. The alternative I've just proposed is 59 acres, 2,525 potential units, and the state's requiring 50 acres, 2,045. So my suggestion is a lot little larger than need be, but it's the same areas we're considering. Gives us a little bit of buffer, and it lowers it down so that we can take our time, look at those other districts, find out how we want to develop them, determine if we want to use other methods, such as the 40R or the LIP program, to have them developed in an orderly way that we can control. We can probably end up getting 25% affordable units instead of the 10 or potential 20. There's just more pluses to going slow. Doing what we need to, to meet the state mandate, have that out of our way, and then go back and see what we do with these other districts.
Excuse me. Okay, Mr. Plasko. You made it.
Yeah, I could go on forever, but we decided we would not. Unless it's questions.
All right. So we have a amendment on the floor right now, and we do still have some registered speakers. So here's what we're going to do, because the registered speakers may not have wanted to speak on the amendment, but they may be speaking in general anyway. I'm going to call the registered speakers. You can pass if you would like to, and if the amendment, before we go back to the main motion, or if the, we will come back to the registered speakers. So in other words, I'll call the registered speakers. Mr. Shaughnessy, is there a point of information?
Kevin, that was your, I don't think that was my fault.
Wow.
He's moving, he's moving really quick. Madam Moderator, I just, I'm wondering if you could explain, because I don't remember this ever happening before, where a registered speaker had an amendment. It seems that that circumvents the process that we've come to accept, where we get the articles, you know, it's approved, and then it comes to town meeting. If that's the case, then I would think many people...
Mr. Shaughnessy, so I will explain the point of, I will answer your point of information. Per our rules, a registered speaker can make a motion for an amendment. The only thing a registered speaker cannot make a motion for is they can't call for the question or move the question. So it is permissible by our rules, and in fact, has happened in my reign for the last three years, it has happened. So what I'm doing to accommodate for it is I will call the rest of the registered speakers, so they can still speak now if they want to, including the amendment and the overall motion. If they want to pass, we'll come back to them, so they still keep their place in line, so to speak.
Understood. Could I ask a few more questions?
No, because the only way I'm recognizing you is a point of information, sir. We have a motion on the floor, and we have registered speakers, so you're out of order.
Okay. So you decide who, does anyone have the privilege of seeing what other people are presenting ahead of time? Who decides the order?
The order is decided, and again, please, Mr. Shaughnessy, be respectful to the rules of town meeting. We have a registered...
Excuse me. I think I'm being exceptionally respectful. That's not, that's not my intention.
Excuse me, Mr. Shaughnessy, can I answer your question? The rules of town...
Without accusing me of being disrespectful, of course, Madam Moderator.
Mr. Shaughnessy, please. The rules of town meeting are part of the town bylaws. There is a specific rule on registered speakers. Registered speakers are called in the order that they register with the moderator. That's the order that they were called in. I do ask every registered speaker what they're planning on saying. We did know that Mr. Plasko, as you could see, the town clerk and myself, also the town planner and town council, were given a copy of the motion. So we are following our rules. I appreciate your questions, and I appreciate your concerns, but that's what we're trying to do here.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Patchakowski, you are next up. Would you like to...
Yes.
Thank you. And Ms. Mankiewicz, you would be after Mr. Patchakowski if you still want to speak now.
I'm going to speak on what I was going to, and then I'll speak if body allows me a little bit on the amendment. My name is Ernie Patchakowski. I'm a District 9 Town Meeting Member, a member of the Planning Board, and also was a member of the 3A Task Force. I would like to talk to you a little bit about why this is a good bylaw, that to a situation that the state put us and another 177 towns in. First off, I'd like to address why we're at 78 acres and not the required minimum 50. By going to the 78-acre number, we are able to add more green space to parcels, especially to areas that today have none. Better stormwater management, again, to some areas that today have none. We're able to better, you know, spread out our controls of things like building heights, setbacks, and things of that nature. Each district would have its own set of rules, so to speak. The additional land we added contains parcels that today are underutilized or not utilized at all, with no real adverse effect to any existing residential neighborhoods. Some people argue that we have too many apartments now. We have too many apartments now, and we will become a city and lose our hometown charm. we will become a city and lose our hometown charm. That's fine, and I understand your views and opinions. I would argue that if driving by a 50-year-old vacant lot, or having closed-up factories, or areas that could, you know, use a facelift is not hometown charm. But breathing new life into these areas with new buildings, people that will walk to our businesses, districts, and support them only help our businesses and our town grow. Remember, businesses will go to the people, not the other way around. And again, these would be in areas where we would want them. And if you walked, you know, 200 yards in any direction from any of these areas, you are gonna be in a residential neighborhood. Let me remind the body, and I think Mrs. Bodenhofer brought that up earlier, that about two years ago, an applicant came before us with a proposal for apartments on Lenox Street. We turned it down, and they withdrew the plan. It was not as much as though we didn't like the idea of the apartments there, but it was a one parcel plan. What we wanted, and what was asked for by town meeting, was a comprehensive look at the entire section of town for possible rezoning, and not just one parcel at a time through LIP programs and 40Rs. Well, the 3A mandate kind of forced us to get that done. The task force and the planning board looked at the 3A state mandate, not as a burden, but as an opportunity to do what we thought was best to serve the town using good planning practices. Taking what the state is requiring and adapting them to our needs, and not just do the minimum. The Hoyle Street parcel has a lot of, has had a lot of discussion, and, you know, if it should be in or out of the new district. That piece of land is actually two parcels. One is owned by the hospital, used for parking, it's part of their parking plan, and the other parcel is privately owned. Some would make the point that because those parcels are also in the medical overlay district, that it might be a selling point to any future hospital prospective buyer looking to buy our hospital. I hope someone does. That is a valid point. But what we learned from some of the people in our community engagements was the need for different types of housing as well. In our business community, through engagements, places like the skating club, Mystic Scenic, Moderna, and even the hospital, were looking for housing for their employees, and that was a bigger problem, was finding adequate housing people could work, walk, and live near their jobs. In closing, I understand that some people, you know, don't agree with this and don't want anything to do with it, or they like part of the plan but don't like all of the plan. But I think it is a good bylaw that covers the state mandate as well as our local needs. I don't think it goes too far. I, please ask you to support this article. And if I still have a couple of minutes left as far as the, Mr. Plasko's amendment, doing zoning on the fly is dangerous, especially something like this. So we looked at that amendment, is to keep Avalon Bay, it's an eight-acre site. It's a single site, one parcel. We, I don't know, and if that would pass muster with the state. And the other things that have to be consideration is, we have to go back to the planning board and the task force and look at if, when you reduce the size of the districts, now your heights are gonna have to go higher. What are we gonna do about green space? What are we gonna do about parking? What are we gonna do about setbacks in these districts? You know, how much are we gonna, you know, change? All these things have to be calculated and refigured. So I would caution you to, you know, and I don't want to use the word willy-nilly, but just, you know, do zoning on the fly without taking all these other things into consideration. There's a lot more that goes into us than just saying, well, let's go from seventy-eight to 50 acres. There's a lot more that goes into that that has to be recalculated, and it has to pass the state as well. So I caution you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pachakowski. Ms. Mankiewicz, do you wanna? And Michael J., you would be up next.
Okay. I've heard a number of-
Can you please identify yourself?
Ann Mankiewicz, Cross Street, District Seven. Not one of the District Seven reps that spoke tonight has bothered to come through District Seven and talk to anybody in my neighborhood. It's my understanding that if you are a rep, you need to rep your neighborhood. None of the reps that got up here tonight have knocked on my door, my neighbor's door, the neighbor across the street, the people on Plumpton Street, the people on Monroe. To me, this is not representative of my neighborhood that is going to have to look at whatever is built there. If you can guarantee that 50% of that 35% increase over the 50, if that's not a small increase, unlike what was said in the presentation, that's a 35% increase over the 50. I'd like to see some plans as to how much green space there is gonna be. I am opposed to any building over two stories high. Right now, people on Cross and parts of Plumpton, Lenox, we can see the sun go down. If they start building houses that are housing places that are three stories high, it's going to impact the skyline. The other question I have is looking at the Central Street diagram. It looks like you're taking over the MBTA's parking lot, so I have a question. Why is the parking lot included in that district overlay?
All right, Ms. Dixon-
Are you going to dismantle the parking lot?
Hold on, Ms. Dixon, do you want to take that question, please?
Madam Moderator, may I also answer another question that was posed-
Sure.
About the amount of open space?
I don't know if that was a rhetorical question or an actual question.
Okay, so now, all right. It's over a million square feet, anyway. Okay, so the question about including the parking lots. So when you create a zoning district, that's the, zoning is long-range planning on a district-wide level. It's not really intended to be about specific development projects, parcel by parcel, and we've talked about that and covered it tonight. In that sense, zoning for the entire neighborhood of Norwood Central down Lenox Street as proposed encapsulates parcels that may never be developed, and the MBTA parking lots are recognized as those types of lots. To not include them in the zoning wouldn't make sense, because then it would be a kind of Swiss cheese zoning district, right, with holes all over it. We don't not zone something for single-family housing because there's wetlands there. You know, all the land is zoned for, you know, compatible uses. But the state does recognize that certain parcels are not going to be developed, and the compliance model that we have to test all of our numbers against does recognize that. So all the square footage for those MBTA parking lots is considered excluded land, and doesn't count to our acres. But we get acreage for it, it just doesn't count towards our unit capacity numbers. Does that make sense?
Okay, so that explains why it's in the map. I think it's naive to believe that there aren't already lawyers and contractors lined up to build every square inch. One of the things I kept hearing at these meetings was, we don't have to build right away. That's naive. It is going to happen right away. It is going to be built out. No contractor is going to let a parcel of land sit there vacant if they can build on it, and the sooner they build, the better. I've heard a lot of hard stories tonight, too. When I bought Norwood, I lost my job six months after I bought the house. I took in roommates to survive. High tech had imploded. I couldn't find a job that would support the mortgage. I found a way to make it through. The same stories that I heard tonight, you can go in any town in the state of Massachusetts and hear those same stories about those same families, that they would like to live near their work, but the housing is too expensive. Worcester, Framingham, Marlborough. Look around the other towns. These are the same stories. I've heard them in those towns. So it's not unique to Norwood. Everybody is struggling with the housing.
Ms. Mankiewicz, do you need more time?
Yes, I do, please.
How much more time do you need?
Probably another five or six minutes. I would, again, I've seen a lot of reps speak tonight. I'm from the neighborhood, and I would really like the time.
Excuse me. Does anybody want to grant, Mr. Easy, a motion for five more minutes?
Yes.
And a second, Ms. Giud. Thank you.
Thank you. The board has done a very-
Well, all in favor, sorry. All in favor?
(noise)
All opposed? I'm gonna give a little leeway on that, Ms. Mankiewicz.
Okay, thank you. I do thank the board for all the work that they have done. I'm not negating that. But one complaint I have is that the very first meeting, I said, you can't just announce these meetings on the town website. You need to put posters in the library, in the senior center, and it needs to be every week in the newspaper. I read the local newspaper, cover to cover. I only saw two announcements. And if you had meetings scheduled out, why couldn't you have posted all of those meetings in one place in the newspaper, and then posted it at the senior center? We asked that in the first meeting, and everything is either on the website or Facebook, and a lot of people don't use it. I, as a teacher, wouldn't dare use Facebook. It's too dangerous. The other thing that kind of upsets me is why can't we wait until the court case is settled with Milton? Might give us some breathing room. That's coming up in September. The other thing is, is it feels like this is being crammed down some neighborhood's throats, much like the state crammed it down your throats. And our reps didn't really read this thing before they voted on it. Ask them. They didn't. Okay, Situette did a presentation on Channel Two. Channel Two WGBH has had several presentations about this. Battencourt, who is their investigative reporter, has said, the one thing that the state has underestimated is town infrastructure, and the state is not ready, nor do they have a plan to step up and help with any infrastructure problems. Situette wants to do this, but their water situation won't support it. And Ms. Battencourt has been battering the governor and everybody else up there, what are you doing to support the towns with infrastructure? They don't have a plan. They're not going to help us. They're not going to help us. So I believe that we should wait until after the Milton situation is settled. What have we got to lose? And I think this should be a town-wide vote. I have a problem with a small group of people deciding what's gonna happen in my neighborhood. Avalon has changed the nature of the neighborhood.
Ms. Mankiewicz, I need you to wrap it up, please.
I thank you for listening to me, but I think there is no need to rush this thing through.
Thank you. Michael J.? And next, we have Monica Phillips Young.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Michael Juszczyk, District Two. I just wanted to echo and reinforce what's been said by many of the supporters of the proposed bylaw. It's been described as, you know, modest, which I think is accurate, an accurate description, as well as very clever. If you look at the zoom-ins on the Yellow Sheets, pages six, seven, and eight, and this has been touched on by many of the speakers, you can see that many of these parcels are already developed. Some are quite dense with existing apartments. It's just mentioned that some are parking lots, like for the MBTA. There's really no realistic probability that those particular parcels are going to be developed in anything denser in the near future. So really, what we're looking at is, I think, what was part of the presentation earlier, was about five or six acres of currently undeveloped vacant or underutilized property. And it seems to me that this is a perfectly appropriate place to put in additional zoning, again, as it's required by the state. I think the other important point to note, too, is that this is not a requirement that any particular housing actually gets built on any of those parcels. It's all going to depend on what the market has. Not so long ago, we rezoned the downtown overlay to allow redevelopment there, and really, nothing has happened of any, of any substance. So I don't think that there's really any realistic chance that, you know, bulldozers are gonna start coming in on the day after we pass this. I know my time is short, so I just wanted to briefly address the motion to amend. Now, if I were in a court of law, I'd be up screaming that this is essentially an 11th-hour, last-minute, bad faith attempt to essentially put one over on us, or have us make a decision, or to have a court make a decision without all the facts and without any notice or opportunity to consider it. Here, obviously, we're at a town meeting. Madam Moderator has confirmed that the rules of town meeting were complied with. Apparently, Madam Moderator and the town officials were given the proposed amendment in advance. They have the slides that they're gonna put up on the screen. However, unless I missed an email, which I don't believe that I did, none of the town meeting members were provided with notice of this amendment. It's essentially sprung on us after we've had very many speakers in a long time of debate. Now, as we heard, the task force took 18 months to study the proposal that's been put before us today. They had an extensive community-wide process. Everyone had the chance to participate that wanted to. And in fact, we were just informed today by the committee that the state has given preapproval to the bylaw that's in front of us. And at this last minute now, we're asked to continue, asked to consider a motion to amend, and an amendment of the plan, that we don't know if it's going to comply with the state. It's just been represented to us that it does, but I'm not, I'm not prepared to make that judgment based on looking at a screen for, you know, a couple of minutes that's been taken down, and also with no input from anyone else in the town. So I think, I'm honestly a little bit offended that I'm being asked to continue, to consider a motion like this. I believe the bylaw as, as presented to us deserves an up or a down vote today. I would urge everyone to vote in favor of that. If by chance this body does not approve the bylaw, then there's a chance to consider amendments, as was mentioned, we have until the end of the year, to, to pass something, to comply with the law. But I believe that considering this motion to amend today is inappropriate, and we should vote on the bylaw as presented in the words. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Monica Phillips Young? And Debbie Homewood is registered next. You gonna pass?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Okay, this is gonna be-
Monica, you, please, sir.
Monica Phillips Young, District Three, Representative. Now, this is going to be a little bit, it'll be related to this amendment, but just give me some time, please. To quote Tony Mitchell, "They paved paradise and they put in a parking lot." Well, what we did forty-odd years ago is we got snowed by the hospital. They went everywhere. They told these senior citizens, if you have a heart attack in Norwood Center, if we move to Wallpole, you'll never make it in time. Honest to goodness, we heard that from one of their CEOs. Now, this is deja vu all over again, too. Now, I think that my real problem is with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and our governor right now. I just get the feeling that this may be indirectly a way to help bail out our transit system as well. I mean, there's a lot of questions here. Why is this so important? Has this woman been in the town of Norwood and looked at where she's expecting us to put apartments in or multifamily housing? Second of all, now that more towns are entertaining this, they are finding that, well, the, something we all realize, I think, underneath, especially those of us who have been around the block for a few decades. I don't believe for one moment this is going to solve the needs of people who need reasonable housing. The developers are there, let's not kid ourselves. They don't give a rat's patoot. They want to make money, number one, and they want to make it as fast as they can. So they're not gonna have a reasonable rent, even when people move in. Horror story in Wallpole. They revamped the, and they have a train station, they revamped the, oh, it was- Oh, it was a mill area. They had Kendall Mills and several other places there, and they put in a huge, beautiful, modern apartment building. Well, I know a young couple who was renting there, and in one month's time, the rent went up about $800, their new lease that they signed. That was too hard for them to handle, especially with a young child. That's not affordable housing. And we will not see affordable housing. Number two, how much would you pay to live right next door to railroad tracks? I can hear them from my back windows. I mean, I can hear them in my bathroom and in my kitchen, and I'm on Wheelock Avenue in Norwood. You know, it's okay. It gives you kind of an old-time feeling. Everybody loves. And that's one of the things we're talking about. Norwood is really special. I was in Florida for 14 very long, god-awful years. And I have grown up in this town, and I am so bloody proud of it. I would tell people about Norwood in Florida, and I'd describe it, and they would wistfully look at me, especially if they were from the northeast or some of the midwestern towns, and they'd say, "Oh, that sounds like home." Yeah, Florida's not home. I moved back, and I'm so darn happy. The first thing I did was run for town meeting. And I was a shoo-in. Okay, now, the last thing I wanna tie this together with is, I am proud to be a town meeting rep. I have a responsibility to each and every one of you, but especially for the people in my district. I am there for them. I've heard from people who were being displaced from their housing, and one of these people is kind of waiting in Alloboro now for affordable housing in an elderly complex. Wonderful, isn't it? Somebody who lived in Norwood forever, and when the person who owned the house died, kids took over, and, well, we wanna remodel, and we wanna, you know, this, that, and the other thing. I'm sorry, you're just gonna have to leave. This is where we are. There was a time when rents didn't change for years at a time. I know, because I grew up in a three-decker with no hot running water, okay? But it was fine. It was fine. It was in South Norwood, and that was home.
Ms. Phillips Young, do you need more time?
Just a couple of minutes. I'm gonna wrap this one up.
Hold on. You need two more minutes?
Thank you, Sue.
All right, Sue. Mr. Miller, your... And Mr. Pesky, thank you.
Okay, what I'm going to say now...
I'm sorry. I'm blowing the job here. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
I just have it. You have two minutes.
Thank you. What I would like to do is call out our town meeting members, and I want to address anyone here who is on a board, who's been appointed or elected. It's going to be up to you. I know we can pass this, and it's only a zoning change. But I want you, when it's time to approve or to give the go-ahead for some of these projects, I want you to do it in good conscience. I want you to do it because it is the thing to do. It's a proper use of that land, and it will benefit the people who are supposedly going to benefit from this whole idea. We do have to help each other, and it's not happening. So keep that in mind, and when you go to decide whether or not you'll approve a project, please, vote with your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Homewood, are you passing? Okay. Mr. Sad is the last registered speaker.
Madam Moderator, final information.
Yes, Mr. Connolly. Well, can you wait for a mic? Can you wait for a mic? Hold on. Mr. Sad is the last one.
Right, thank you.
There you go.
Thanks, Kevin. I wanna thank the young lady here from South Norwood, and I wanna thank...
Mr. Sad, can you please identify yourself?
Michael Sad, new town meeting member, new selectman.
Your district?
Five.
Thank you, sir.
Removed from six. This 3A plan, some of you watched the selectmen's meeting, understand the ramifications of the drastic move that we're making here tonight or in the future. It's not every day that I agree with Alan Slater, although they're sleeping, but it's a great idea. I think we're moving a little bit too fast, and we can come back here in two or three months and tweak this thing, and I agree with Bill Plasko a little bit also, but I think that I don't like the state telling Norwood what to do with all these 40Rs, 40Bs, 40Ds, 3As. Next month or next year, it'll be a different project. I wanna just answer, or get an answer from somebody, the cost with this whole 2,000, 1,000 apartments for the police department, fire department, the teachers, the trash weight pickup that's gonna be added to the town. Who can answer those questions for me, moderator?
Mr. Mizuko would be able to answer those questions.
Tony's in the hot seat again.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm gonna give you the sort of a similar answer or non-answer. Growth costs the town more money. Decline costs the town more money. I have worked in municipalities where they've had a declining population, and guess what? When your population goes down, it costs you more money. Your infrastructure is still spread out. Large apartment complexes, we do not collect trash from, so it's important to note that that would not be a cost. We only do that in condo units or smaller multifamilies, I think, under five units. In terms of police or fire, there again, growth tends to cost money, but decline costs money as well. Fifteen residential... Fifteen single-family homes on a residential subdivision may never have a fire response in 30 years, or four or five houses could burn down. They could have 30 kids in the school system or five kids in the school system. Does growth generally cost more to manage a larger population? It does. You gotta look at the factor of what we're looking at adding to the population over the time that we're adding the population to. That being said, we haven't... We're in the process of a public safety staffing study. We don't know if our current public safety staffing is where it should be for where the town is today, because we're always changing. I think I, at the town meeting information session, gave the example that 10 years ago, there wasn't too much going up on where Moderna is, but now there's 2,000 jobs up there. What will be going on in 10 years up there? Hopefully, there's 4,000 jobs. So that's always going to change. There's a cost of growth, there's a cost of decline as well. Are 65 police officers right for Norwood? We could use more. We could find a way to manage with less. It wouldn't be ideal. So to simply say more growth will lead to more cost, yes, but not doing anything may lead to more cost. And there's a cost of commercial growth as well, although that usually pays for itself. Again, to beat the point home, a single-family home almost never pays for its cost. If you have two children, you put them through the normal public schools, you have to pay taxes for about 60 years to cover the cost of that education. That's not counting anything else. You have three or four kids, you're never... The town's never getting more money in your taxes than it's providing in services. We're a community, and we share in the cost of the community.
So if we added 1,000 people to the town, would we need one fight or one police officer? Is there a formula?
Mr. Mizuko, you wanna...
Thank you, Madam Moderator. There is no specific formula. It's based on run volume. It's based on what's going on in the community and best practices that are a standard. A lot of towns look at... There's an FBI sort of general standard of roughly 1.75 officers per thousand, but that's just a ballpark. Every community is unique. I explained to the Finance Commission last week, we have a pretty heavy commercial base that comes with some costs to the fire department that we wouldn't have if we were an entirely residential base, like communities like Franklin that are similar in size to us. That being said, that commercial base pays a lot in taxes. And just one other point to that point, and the cost earlier, somebody mentioned infrastructure. Situette is having a problem with water and sewer, and Rentham is having a problem with water and sewer. It's a significant, significant concern for those communities. Norwood fortunately is a member of the MWRA. We don't have a water concern. We don't have a sewer capacity concern for residential projects the way other communities do. More taxpayers lessen the burden. The services could change based on needs and what policy decisions boards like the selectmen and the school committee make.
Thank you. And another point of information, down by Honeydew, they're gonna put a... They're proposing a development, 32 units, just to give you an idea what's coming to Norwood. And they're gonna come for a great water, a great tax rate, a great school system. Five one-bedrooms, 21 two-bedrooms, and six three-bedrooms. In my view, and I don't know if Paul can back me up on this, I estimate we're gonna get 33 kids out of that one building. The school's gonna be bulging. They have to think of the cost of what it's gonna take for this whole town, the challenge of what's gonna happen with our town with three, four, five-story buildings. I just think we shouldn't rush into this. We should take Alan Slater's opinion. I don't... Didn't agree with him before we got in here, but now I agree with him. So I thank you, and I hope we can postpone this for a while and re-tweak it, 'cause I think Windsor Gardens having commercial on the first floor is gonna come in, as they've heard, for a hardship, for a variance, for converting the commercial on the first floor to residential. So it doesn't make sense to a commercial in Windsor Gardens, but thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Sad. All right, that exhausts our registered speakers. We do have an amendment on the floor right now. Mr. Connolly.
Kevin Connolly, District Seven. Respectfully, I move the question on the amendment.
All right. Do I have a second? Ms. Quinn. All right. Moving the question is a two-thirds vote. All in favor of moving the question on, and this is going to be on the amendment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
It's definitely a two-thirds there. All right. Before we vote on... Yes, Mr. Palmetier. And we're actually going to take a brief recess, because we do need to look at this amendment to make sure it's gonna be compliant. So we're gonna take... We're gonna take a couple of minutes, but Mr. Palmetier, what's your point of information?
Brian Palmetier, District Eight. I'm curious... Is it on? Can you hear... All right. I'm curious... Usually, before somebody can move the question, you have to vote on whether you're going to accept the amendment, and then discussion. And I've only heard people commenting on the discussion. So am I misunderstanding?
You are misunderstanding. So the first vote that we will take, we'll move to the question to actually vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, it becomes part of the main motion. If it fails, it's... We go back to the main... To be debating the main motion.
That's not my question. Somebody makes a motion that they want to amend it. Isn't there a discussion on the amendment before you vote?
We have just been discussing it.
But that was only registered speakers. Nobody else has been allowed to...
Well, I understand that, but our rules are, once the registered speakers are exhausted, then someone can move the question.
But that was on the main motion. Can they move the question on an amendment that hasn't been discussed?
Yes, they can. And it had been discussed.
Because there was no opportunity to put registered speakers on the amendment.
The registered speakers were given the option to talk about the amendment, and many of them did.
If we didn't hear about the amendment tonight...
Mr. Palmetier, again...
Until I picked up something out there.
Again, we're following...
Why I don't understand.
We're following our rules.
Okay.
All right. So let's take... We're gonna take a five-minute recess in order to have the planning board confer. Everybody, stretch your legs, get a little water. Everybody, let's get... Everybody, please take your seat. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your diligence. We have a motion on the floor for an amendment. The question has been moved and passed. The amendment is up. I am going to... And we just had a little consultation, I think everybody saw, during the break. Because Mr. Plasko's motion amendment to the area has not been pre-vetted with the state, I just want members to know that we do not know if it's compliant or not. Mr. Plasko believes that it is, but it has not been pre-vetted like the main motion has already, the article in the main motion. So, just so everybody knows, as you vote, this is also a majority vote. And I'm going to try this... I think I have a fairly good sense. All right. All those in favor of Mr. Plasko's amendment to Article Four, his motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
All right. That's what I thought. The motion is defeated. That brings us back to the main motion, and I will recognize speakers there. Mr. Shaughnessy.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and I apologize for earlier if I offended you.
Thank you.
We've heard from a lot of people tonight...
Mr. Shaughnessy.
Yes. Kevin Shaughnessy, District Six.
Thank you.
Also, I work at the light department, and I know many of you here. I just wanted to thank Sarah and her staff, and also the elected planning board for the year and a half that they've put in on this. I'm just going to speak for myself. What I think... You know, I've been thinking about downsizing myself. I live in a relatively big house, three kids. Two have moved on. They're... Two of them are nurses in Boston. Very proud of them. One is still in school, wants to be a teacher, wants to teach at the Bolsh, actually, so... Which is where he went to school with his sisters. So hopefully, that will happen. I'd be very pleased if he graduates soon. So I'm thinking to myself, you know, what does this mean to me? I would love to live in some of the areas that I see, particularly on Lenox Street. I grew up not in Norwood, but we spent a lot of time in Norwood on 230 Lenox Street, which was right across from Lindbergh Heat. Many of you remember Lindbergh Heat. It was an industrial heat stamping plant. No longer there. There's still a lot of industry there. And I think to myself, wouldn't it be wonderful, as I downsize, someone else buys my bigger house? Maybe there's someone that's starting a family, they're moving from their, you know, smaller house. Now that house is open, and someone else that maybe is renting in Norwood can get that house. And someone like me, you know, if I want to walk around Norwood... I assure you, I would be a good neighbor to the people that live there. I would love to be able to walk down to, you know, pass the Bolsh, down to Hawes Pool, walk uptown, have lunch. So that's what I'm thinking. That's why I am supporting this. My kids, I talked to my daughter the other day, and I said, you know, this is my older one, the only one that's willing to move back to Norwood right now. I think they all would love to in the future, but she's a nurse at Mass General, and she said, Dad, I don't think I can afford it. And I said, well, of course you can, because you can live with me. You can live with your mom and I, but that's not an option. So she said, you know, Dad, I think I would, you know, like to move back to Norwood. She has roommates, and she's, you know, I think at, you know, mid to late twenties stage, where you start to think about, well, maybe I don't need to live in Cambridge or Brookline or Boston or whatever. So, you know, when I brought this up, she said, you know, Dad, you know, when I named the places, she goes, that would be, you know, someplace that I would really be interested in. I'm a professional. Maybe I could work at, you know, whatever Norwood Hospital ends up being. You know, you could walk to work. You could play in Norwood. You could walk uptown. You could go to, you know, dinner or whatever. You can hop on the train and go in Boston. So that, to me, is something I would love to see for my children, to bring them back to Norwood. And that's really all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. Ms. Bailey, right there? Yeah.
Patty Griffin-Starr, District Two. Respectfully move the question.
Do we have a second? Eric, okay. Question has been moved, two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
I still think that it's two-thirds. Hey. Please be respectful. We'll do a show of hands. Question... On the move for the question, all those in favor, please raise your hands. We're in the middle of a vote. I can't take a point of order. All those opposed? All right. I see thirty-three opposed, which means that we have one hundred and twenty-seven for, so that is a two-thirds. That brings us back to the main motion. Now, I heard a point of informa... I hear a point of order. Who was that? The original one?
Madam Moderator, Amanda Ravi, District Nine. I was just reminding the body that you have to have a town meeting badge to vote. That is all.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there another point of order? Mr. Hopcroft?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If we looked at the table on page thirteen, which comes with this motion, the line item nine would reverse the vote on Article One, unless we were to do an amendment to substitute line nine A and nine B from the Article One vote in lieu of line nine on Table 3.15, page thirteen of this motion.
Ms. Dixon? You want to address that? That point of information?
Thank you. This is a challenge of doing multiple zoning articles on the same town meeting warrant. So I would say that it might be appropriate to work on... I don't know how that works procedurally, if we've already called the question.
Is...
An amendment to make that reflection would be productive. I don't know if it's in order, though, so defer to you on that.
So, Mr. DeLuca, is this accepting a friendly amendment to the motion to add that?
Excuse me. Madam Moderator, members of the group, we have moved the question.
Right.
Usually, you know, ordinarily, that is not debatable is not amendable.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I agree with you on that. So it looks like we'll have a little bit of a procedural problem on that. But, Mr. Hearn, do you have a suggestion?
I rise to a point of order, Madam Moderator. David Hearn, District Four. Is it correct, Madam Moderator, that there is no prohibition on more than one motion under an article that is brought before the body?
Well, the problem is, Mr. Hearn, that the question has been moved, so we have to vote.
Is there a prohibition on a subsequent motion still under this article that would cure the problem after we vote on the main motion?
Correct.
Is there a prohibi... Is there any prohibition on that?
No, there is... I do not believe there is, Mr. Hearn.
So as a legal point of view, we could have another motion that cures the problem raised by the gentleman a moment ago.
That's a fabulous suggestion.
Well, there's only a point of order, not a suggestion. We only have points of order, Madam Moderator.
Thank you for the point of order, Mr. Hearn. All right. So we're clear. We're going to vote back on the main motion. I will entertain a motion right after to correct what Mr. Hopcroft has brought up, if anyone so is inclined. Back... We are voting on four. The motion that is before us is Article Four, the motion for four. We will have to vote on Article Five separately. Everybody clear on what we're voting for? All right. So on the motion, this is Article Four, to approve the MBTA zoning bylaw. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
This is a majority vote, and in my estimation, that the majority has it with seventy to sixty-one. Motion carries. All right. Do we have a motion? Mr. Taylor. All right. You can question the vote. Are there six other like-minded individuals who I'm seeing that? All right. So we will go to a standing vote. Let me have... I'm going to need two tellers. Mr. Greeley, can I pull you? And let's see, do we have... Mrs. Sobchak, you're a veteran. Can I pull you as well? All right. So we're going to do a standing count, and we're going to start with this section right over here. All those in favor, please stand. The section to my right, including the front tables, on the right. We'll divide you guys up. So this is everyone who, if you are in favor, please stand. All right. All those in the same section, please, everybody sit down. If you are a no, and I know that Mr. Greeley and Ms. Sobchak are checking badges as well. Okay. Thank you. You can sit down. All right. Middle section, and we'll include the middle table as well. If you are in favor of Article Four, please stand. Means you are in favor of approving the zoning bylaw. Just think, next time we're together, we'll be able—we won't have to do this anymore. All right, everybody, please sit in the middle section. Those who are voting no, please rise in the middle section, including the middle front table. Again, you're standing if you're voting no for the zoning bylaw amendment. All right. Now, to—everybody sit. My far left, this section over here, including the front tables, if you are in favor of the zoning bylaw, Article Four. Okay. Everybody, please sit in that section. Those who are against Article Four, please rise. All right, everybody can sit. All right. The motion passes by one oh three to forty-eight. All right, we're going to take a two-minute breaks to figure out how to handle this possible correction. So, everybody take a little stretch. All right, folks, we're on Article Five. I'm actually going to give you—give everybody a point of information. We just had a little consultation here. The technical correction that Mr. Hopcroft brought up, which is actually adding a row for the earlier article, is something that we can bring back in May, at May Town Meeting. We will still be able to move forward with the AG, because it's going to take them a while for it to be compliant. They have obviously reviewed it before, pre-reviewed, so we're okay, but we will probably come back, and Ms. Dixon had said we can be ready to handle that bit of business in May. All right. That brings us to Article Five, which is the map. Mr. Pachkowski, motion from the planning board.
Move that the town vote to amend the official zoning map of the town of Norwood as printed in the warrant. Less the phrase or take any other action in the matter.
And, Mr. Sheen, you're seconding?
I'm seconding that, thank you.
Okay, and this is just an administrative article, folks. This is basically just the map that accompanies what we have just approved in Article Four. All right, seeing no one with a hand raised, I'm going to put it to a vote. Again, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Again, majority vote, it clearly passes, thank you. That brings us to Article Six. Again, motion from the planning board, Mr. Pachkowski.
Madam Moderator, if you were going to throw this up on the screen, I will read all of those sections, but if you want to get out of here by a reasonable hour, you may want to—I'll leave it up to you if you want me to read them all.
So, folks, there are a number of changes from what was printed in the warrant.
Twenty-two, to be exact.
Thank you, Mr. Pachkowski. That basically are consistency of terms, reducing the size, a couple of things on shared access, and some material used for additional parking, which you see up there. Does the body—is the body okay with looking at it? Or do they want Mr. Pachkowski to read each one? Let me— All right, Mr. Pachkowski, it looks like people want you to read this. And then—and it will be explained, it will be explained as well.
Okay, I got my wire, I'm all set. Move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Norwood as printed in the warrant. Less the phrase or take any action in the matter with the following changes. Section eight point two point one, fourth line, delete will and replace with are intended to. Section eight point two point two point one, second line, delete housing and replace with dwelling. Delete a parcel and replace with a building. Section eight point two point two point one, third line, delete are clearly and replace with shall be. Delete the residence and replace with dwelling, insert shall after the word and. Section eight point two point two point two, building attached, delete entire definition, renumber rest of section. Section eight point two point two point five, primary dwelling unit, rename definition from primary residence to primary dwelling unit. Section eight point two point three point one, second line, delete upon the request of the applicant, insert the. Section eight point two point three point one, third line, replace wave dimensional requirements of this section with authorized relief from any dimensional requirement of this section eight point two, provided that such relief shall not result in substantial detriment to the neighborhood, and. Section eight point two point three point one, sixth line, replace objectives with intent, insert in addition to those requirements established in section ten point four, special permits after the words section eight point two. Section eight point two point three point four point one, replace may with shall, capitalize auxiliary dwelling unit. Section eight point two point three point four point one, replace unit with ADU. Section eight point two point three point four point one B, replace unit with ADU. Section eight point two point three point four point one, point C, replace unit with ADU. Replace attached to with part of, replace auxiliary dwelling unit with ADU. Section eight point two point three point four point one, point D, insert a minimum of before the words two means of egress and an independent egress point after the words one must be. Section eight point two point three point four point one, point D, delete only one egress point may occur through or within the primary dwelling unit, provided the egress is fully available at all times unlocked. Section eight point two point three point four point one, point E, insert primary dwelling unit and ADU must be accessible to one another from the interior of the structure. Section eight point two point three point four point one, point F, insert existing before the words principal dwelling, replace nine hundred with seven hundred and fifty. Section eight point two point three point four point one, point G, replace never with not. Section eight point two point three—Cuddles Flaherty would be proud of this. Section eight point two point three point four point one, point G, replace—oh, never— replace transit with commuter rail. That was point I, not point G. Delete previous section, eight point two point three point four point I point—or one point J. Any parking space added as part of creation of an ADU shall be constructed of pervious material, renumbering remaining sections. Section eight point two point three point four point one, point J, replace accessory apartment with ADU. Renumber to section eight point two point three point four point one, point K. Any new separate outside entrance serving an auxiliary dwelling unit shall be located on the side or in the rear of the building and sufficient to meet the requirements of the state building code for safe egress. Section eight point two point three point four point three, replace no restrictions may be set forth via special permit or other municipal order restricting occupancy of the primary dwelling units or accessory dwelling unit to owners, related persons, or any other conditions of tenancy with no restrictions or requirements concerning ownership or family relations—relationships or the terms of any tenancy of a principal or accessory dwelling unit may be imposed by special permit or any other municipal order, rule, or regulation other than set forth in this section eight point two.
Bravo, Mr. Pachkowski. Mr. Sheen, you're seconding?
I second that, each and every one.
And, Mr. Hatchey, your report?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, I'll try to be brief. The hearing on this particular matter was opened on February 12, 2024, at which time testimony was received, and the hearing continued to February 26, 2024, and it was further continued to March 4. The hearing reopened on March 4, and after deliberation, the hearing was closed, and the board moved to a vote. The board voted three-two to recommend approval of this article to town meeting, subject to a series of amendments to the article as printed in the warrant. A full copy of the article with the above amendments is available on the community development website and will be available tonight here. Four residents in attendance asked questions about the article. Four residents spoke in support of the article citing needs for lower-cost housing and flexibility for homeowners. Two residents voiced their concerns, which included concerns about owner occupancy, visual compatibility of residential additions, and enforcement. Additionally, two members of the public submitted letters for the board's consideration on accessory dwelling units, expressing support for the article and requesting particular revisions. After discussion of the feedback received by the public, as well as input by the building commissioner, the board recommended the following changes, which were just read in detail by Mr. Pachkowski. Anybody want to hear them again? The vast majority of the above changes are minor edits that improve clarity and consistency in terminology. Only three changes are regarding content. The first significant change, number fourteen, recommended by the board would require shared interior interior access between the ADU and the primary dwelling unit. The second significant change, number fifteen, recommended by the board would reduce the maximum allowable size for an ADU to be no larger than seven hundred and fifty square feet down from nine hundred. Both of these changes would enhance the accessory quotes around the word nature of the ADU and strengthen controls to preserve the nature of single-family homes. Finally, the third significant change, number eighteen, removes a requirement for any new parking to be made of pervious materials. This would allow homeowners to implement parking solutions that are more flexible and cost-effective. The planning board is grateful to all the community input. That's it, thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon, do you have anything on this?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Sarah Dixon, Director of Community Development, Town Meeting Member, District Seven. Briefly, the long list of amendments to this motion are what happens when you have attorneys attend your public hearings at planning board. We got a lot of very specific suggestions. We got a lot of very specific suggestions on ways that the language here could be improved and clarified, easier to enforce and interpret. So I understand that this looks messy, apologies. But I do think all of these changes make the proposed bylaw, as I said, easier to read and easier to enforce. Accessory dwelling units are known sometimes as in-law apartments, sometimes as granny flats. They are known to be a small unit attached to a primary dwelling unit, often providing additional living space for a family member or rent it out or for a caregiver. Lots of different reasons people require this type of flexible use for their homes. ADUs are common in Norwood. They have been legally permitted through the Building Department for many years, through a process that the Building Department had implemented. However, the zoning bylaw has been silent on their design. And as the state has started to pay more attention to accessory dwelling units, in one instance, including ADUs and proposed legislation that would require towns to make these by right in their bylaws, but also, as we've seen through the AG's disapproval of other communities imposing certain requirements, it felt appropriate now to take this opportunity to provide a clear, legal pathway for people to construct ADUs in their homes in ways that ensure that they're safe and that they comply with some basic design requirements that protect our interests in making sure that there's no inadvertent two-family conversions of a single-family home or additions of an ADU to a single-family home in a way that would fundamentally change the look and feel of that home in a neighborhood that's a single-family neighborhood. So the long and short of it is that that is the intention and the goal here. The Building Department has worked very closely with the Planning Board to write this language, to ensure that the standards are enforceable and provide assistance to him and his team and their roles. And I welcome any questions you have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dixon. I have two registered speakers on this. So our first registered speaker is Gabby, actually a resident. And I, yeah, Kevin can give you the mic. Please give your name and your address, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cabalan Janed. I live on 12th West Over Parkway, I believe it's District Four. Okay, I'm a contractor, licensed contractor, and I followed the three meetings in the preparation for the ADU, most likely. And after hearing tonight all the concerns about the MBTA zoning, I believe this should make it a lot easier to vote for the ADU. And a little bit about myself, I'm a father of four kids, like two young men and two young ladies. It's about to graduate from college. And first, the youngest one is in the high school, in Norwood High School. I believe that the ADU will be a smart solution to many issues that a middle, or medium-income, low-income people can use to solve many things in their need in their life. Versus like, number one is if kids, for some reason, coming back home after college, they'll have some private place for themselves, to establish themselves till they find a job or buy another place. If an elderly need some special care, that would be a huge help too. Even financially, if you need some extra cash or extra support to keep up with your payment, that will help as well. I heard stories like, oh, that can change the neighborhood from a single-family area to a two-family area. Or that can look really ugly in the neighborhood. Or this can transfer the neighborhood to look like really out of style or out of touch. The zone, or like the call, it's calling for seven hundred and fifty square feet. If no one knows how much it's seven hundred and fifty square feet, if you put two-car garage, this is close to four hundred and fifty square feet or five hundred square feet. So what I'm trying to say is, seven hundred and fifty square feet is not allowed to change your building from a single-family home to a multi-family home. That's number one. Number two is, it does not have to be in addition to the house. It can be part of the existing part of the house. I'll give you an example. Norwood has a lot of raised ranch. The bottom floor, if you're not using it for yourself, it can be a simple ADU. All what you have to do is like, apply with the code, have a kitchen, have a family room, have a bedroom, that with the fire escape windows, that's an ADU. So it does not have to be a lot of cost involving transferring some space in your house to make it an ADU. Another way, a walkout basement. If you have a walkout basement, you can turn that to an ADU. It does not have to be an extra addition to the square footage to the outside of the house or to the yard. Or like, you're gonna lose more green, or like, oh, I need more space on the outside. It does not have to be very costly. We can work it very smart, it can be very helpful. And I wish I was able to plan that a long time ago for my kids when I need it like very soon. My advice to everybody who has kids, like going to school or high school or colleges, plan to have an ADU in your house. Because it can help you very well. Because you don't want your daughter or your son to sleep in the same bedroom right next to you when they were kids like five years old. It's not gonna be helpful at all. So I'm very supportive of the idea. And thank you to Sarah and the task force who prepared and worked very thorough on that. And please, please, everyone, let's vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, and thank you, you sat very patiently waiting to speak, so we thank you. Next, next registered speaker is Mrs. Homewood. Well, first of all, you need a microphone. Can you go to the microphone? Thank you, and you can tell us all who you are.
Debbie Homewood, District Three. Point of order? Our, if, I think this is an incredibly important question. And I think it, it's going to affect everybody in this room, and I believe it should be discussed. And it's 10:30. And are we going to, sorry. Unless, I'm, I'm, I'm good to go till 11:30, 12:00, guys, I'm, I'm good. But I really been plucking away at this for, I don't know, for a year and a half, along with the MBTA. And I think it's important, and I think it needs to be discussed. And have, the MBTA was discussed at length. This is an important article. And it is 10:31.
So, so Ms. Homewood, in my estimation, so first of all, I think for one article to come back on Monday, we run a risk of potentially not having a quorum. But I will take an informal vote of the body to see, it is certainly in my right, I think we can finish this tonight, because it's one article. And I'm seeing some head nodding and some not-head nodding, so.
Can I, can I ask?
So, let's do this, just informal, an informal poll. How many say aye if you would like to continue and finish this tonight and you're willing to stay? Say aye.
Aye.
Those who want to come back on, adjourn now and come back on Monday to do this article, say no.
No.
Then, the will of the body is that we keep going, and I think we can finish. So, Ms. Homewood, would you like to speak?
I would.
Madam Moderator, our rules say that we end at 10:30 unless, in the moderator's opinion, a reasonable extension will finish the business of the meeting. It's not the vote of the body, it's the moderator. You believe this can be finished with all the speakers who may, who probably want to talk about this, rather than entertain a motion to adjourn?
I do.
So it's your ruling, I just want to be clear on that, thank you.
It's my ruling, I, I just took an informal poll, because I want to make sure that people are gonna stay here. So that was not a formal vote, Mr. Hearn. Is another point of order?
There's only two speakers?
We'll present this before. I just want to know what time you think, Madam Moderator, that we will finish? Because frankly, I'm losing energy. And I agree with Ms. Homewood, this is a very important vote.
I think that we're, we're into discussion now. We, Ms. Homewood is the last registered speaker. We'll open it up to the body. And I think that we can probably finish in thirty to forty minutes. And if we don't, and if we don't, then we'll come back and finish on Monday.
I'm fighting for this one, so fasten your seatbelts, guys. No, okay, all right, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not speaking as a Planning Board member, I'm speaking as a District Three. I respectfully disagree with the gentleman upstairs that it should be easier to get the ADUs to go through because the MBTA went through. The MBTA had, how many meetings, Sarah, total? Twenty? Twenty meetings. This, this is a really important question. This has more potential to have effect on the neighborhoods than, and I was in agreement with the MBTA. It is not going to bleed over into the neighborhoods. You might not like it, but people that live in S1s, S2s, and S districts live there because that's what they chose. Both sides get a right to choose. If you don't agree with all the rules and regulations of your, which are non-existent, of in-laws, and I've heard from everybody, Ernie doesn't agree with me, but between manicures, pedicures, and grocery stores, people come up to me all the time. If we don't like the way the in-laws are written or we can't enforce them, then let's fix that. Let's just not reinvent the wheel. I, I am opposed to ADUs on a number of reasons. And I had a really nice organized speech going, because I know how I go on. But now I've got three minutes. We did not have substantial public discussion and engagement on ADUs. We did on the MBTA. Respectfully disagree with the gentleman upstairs. We, we on the Planning Board have sat through the MBTA for sixteen months. And we've got one thing and another in front of us, and we've, they've done a great job on it, and then giving us the information. The ADUs did not get substantial discussion. It is going to be a difference in the neighborhoods. I believe we have to weigh both sides. The developer, the neighbors, the people who you don't like because they live in a neighborhood that you don't like, whether it's, you know, I substantially agree with some of the things that some of the people have said. But we come to them in a different direction. And this is a change in neighborhoods. Things that need to be addressed. One of my biggest arguments, since I've been on the zoning and planning board for longer than I want to tell anybody, is parking. I love the city of Boston. I love Jamaica Plain. But I moved out here because I could never park my car, okay? Now I love Norwood. But I don't live out in the suburbs, so I cannot park my car off the street. And parking is going to be an issue. It's an issue in my little neighborhood, and I live in a single-family neighborhood, when people have company and the neighbor across the street only has a two-car driveway. Parking is an issue, and you add ADUs. Now, the gentleman up there, it's a contractor, and I know all just a little tiny bit about rentals.
Ms. Homewood, do you need more time?
I do, can somebody give me more time?
How much more do you want?
I want a half an hour, but why don't you give me?
How about three, you want three minutes?
Kevin gave me six.
Five, all right. Mr. Miller's making a motion to give you five. Mr. Hearn seconds it. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no? It passes, go ahead, Ms. Homewood, do you have five?
Okay, okay. Again, may not be popular, but people that paid a premium to live in S1, S2, and S districts should have a say in this. This has not had substantial vetting, I hate the word, but, hold on. Discussion, public discussion. Let's do with this article what we did with the MBTA. Let's do that. If it's a good article, like the MBTA, you agreed, was a good article, then let's give it some air. If we can't discuss it and we gotta do it in five minutes, that doesn't feel right to me. This is substantial, this is a substantial article. It will change, maybe for the better, maybe not. But it will change the neighborhoods. S1s, S2s, and S districts are there for a reason. And those of us that have chosen to live there should have a say in this. I think it needs to have, again, if it's a good article, like the MBTA one was, then it should get some time. It should get a task force. We've got all these questions, like parking is one of my big issues. Because I believe that, no, I don't want them to blacktop everything. And I don't think everybody should be parked on the sidewalk. I like to use the sidewalk. I think that we should have a compatibility piece to this, that the property, again, we'll expect, respectfully disagree. Not everybody's going to do what the gentleman upstairs said they can definitely do. We don't have any rules on this. Are we gonna put on something different on this house? We, adjacent properties have an effect on each other, both positive and negative. Is this about making more housing or making money? There, I put my tongue on the third rail. I hear the in-law argument, I heard it this morning at the senior center, from two women, just wanted to do my damn yoga, okay? And I got two women that, well, if I couldn't have put an in-law apartment on my unit when my mother moved there, I wouldn't have been able to hold on my house. But they gave me rules in the town of Norwood and said I had to rent it to, to a family member. Now, somebody, our, our enforcement officer says that's not enforceable. I checked with an attorney, who I don't pay and doesn't have anything to do with the town. That's not true, it is enforceable, you can make it. But I, I get it. But this is an important article. And if it, if it can't be vetted, I know everybody wants to move the question, but if it can't be vetted and we can't do with it what we did with the MBTA, it doesn't feel right. I had a really organized speech, but now I'm being rushed. Make, make it easier to get, I think if we either do task forces or we do exactly what we did with the MBTA, we'll get a better product. We don't have any rules for this. It's, look at Article Six. It's a little tiny thing. Do you know if they can, have to have parking? Does it have to be owner-occupied? I can't even read my own writing.
Ms. Homewood, you need to wrap it up, please?
Okay, okay. Owner-activity compatibility, adjacent properties. This is an article that is going to affect the neighborhoods, not the, the three districts we laid out on the MBTA. It's going to affect the neighborhoods. So I respectfully ask the board to give it more time or, can I make a motion? No? I can't? I can't make a motion? Well, Mr. Plasko made a motion while he.
Ms. Homewood, you're out of time.
I'm out of time, but I, I can't make a motion?
No, you're out of time. All right. Ms. Quinn? Ms. Quinn.
Thank you, Sarah Quinn, District Two. With all due respect, this is yet another article that we've paid a lot of money for professionals to vet and come up with, and then we have all these experts who have considered it and given us their recommendations. It is exhausting to sit here for so long and listen to the back and forth when we've already got the recommendation in front of us. I agree, everyone should be entitled to an opinion, but at some point, we have to stop with the task force and the open meetings and the surveying all the people. I mean, every neighborhood is important. It doesn't matter if it's a single-family home or a two-family home. In my neighborhood alone, I think there are many families that would have welcomed an accessory dwelling unit so that we could have kept our aging parents with us. But at this point, all of this is already happening. There are in-laws all over the place, in every district and every neighborhood. We're just formalizing it. So please, can we vote so I can go home?
Doesn't work like that. Sir?
Patrick Gertie, District Four, and I agree with, you know, the whole conversation's going back and forth, and Debbie, you're right. I think it needs more consideration. I, myself, have an in-law suite. One of the things that I had to do as part of that in-law suite is I had to change my deed that said, I will not rent out that unit. I don't see anything in there being said about renting or deed changes or anything. So those are the kind of things, if, if there are gonna be changes to single-family properties, single-family homes, are we changing all the zoning bylaws? If this was vetted, this is the most we've seen of it as town meeting members. I mean, my feeling is, is there a way of delaying this? Putting this thing, do I make like an amendment to the motion?
You can make a motion to send it back to committee.
Can I make a motion to send this back to the community and bring it back at the next town meeting?
To the committee.
To the committee.
To refer it back to the committee.
Refer it back to the committee.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I am.
All right. Do I have a second? Mr. Burgess has seconded. All right. So we have a motion on the floor. On the motion, which is to amend the motion to refer, and to refer this back to committee.
Madam, our point of order is?
Yes, sir. It would be the Planning Board. We'd refer it back to the Planning Board. All right. On the motion, Mr. Plasko.
Our eyes to support the motion to refer back because my other recommendation to the body was going to be to defeat it tonight. There are two legislative actions going on right now that are very different from each other and different from the current law, and one of these is probably gonna be resolved within the next few months. The main one is the Governor's Bill, the Housing Affordable Housing Law Bill, that cover ADUs, and that's considerably different from some of the provisions in this proposal before us tonight. So I think it's foolhardy to go forward when this is about to be changed at the state level, and I think we should wait. Also, the reasons, other reasons we should send it back, there are a number of very questionable things here, maybe Town Council could answer them. For example, it talks about adding these ADUs to two-family homes. The existing state law allows them to be added to single-family homes. Is that, am I being too specific? What's the difference? Are these allowed on a two-family home? Because every, every law I've read or looked at, the existing law and the two pending laws, they all reference a single-family home.
Mr. Delugue, you want to take that case?
Madam Moderator, members of the group, we have done a considerable amount of research, and the AG's office has been very firm that we don't have the ability to restrict those kinds of units. Respectfully, Bill, I don't see that there's a distinction between the single-family or multi-family units.
Thank you. Madam Moderator, the next thing regarding zoning does not control ownership. A two-family can be a condominium. This proposal here says that only one of the units in a two-family can have an ADU. So who gets it? Just the one who happens to go for it first? And the other, and the other party to that two-family is not able to do the same thing? Somebody's rights are better than the others, how do we resolve that? There's a reference here, it's a very small minor change, but it's wrong. It says here that under number four, it says that there shall be either/or, there should be a stove plus either/or a refrigerator or a sink. State sanitary code requires both, not an or. It's mandatory that there be both present, so we should change that. There's nothing in here regarding short-term tenancy. The current law references another law and says we can control the short-term tenancy in response to that other law. That other law is taxation. It's about being, the town being able to get money if somebody decides to use this for short-term income, A, Airbnb rentals, and that kind of thing. But we're not even thinking about addressing that here. This says very clearly that you cannot put any controls on owner-occupied. And while that's debatable, and I don't know how we would decide that, but again, the Governor's Bill is just the opposite. It does allow you to do, do that, or it doesn't allow you, excuse me. So we've got inconsistencies here, consistencies here, and I think it's prudent upon us to wait. There's no reason this has to be done tonight. It's not a mandatory thing like the MBTA, and even then we still have time. This is solely just to get it done, and a few months, we can get it done properly when we have all the correct information, we know which one of these bills is passed, and which ones we actually want to draw our local bylaw to comply with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor. Question been moved. Do I have a second? Mr. Peter, you got it? Okay. Thank you. Question has been moved. Again, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. We're in the middle of a vote. I can't take a point of order. All those opposed to moving the question, say no. Definitely two-thirds. What's the point of order? No, we're moving the question on the amendment. On the amendment. So the question, the question has been moved and passed. That takes us to the amendment, which is to refer this back to the Planning Board, refer to committee. Again, it's a majority vote for this motion. Everybody clear? All right. All those in favor of referring this back to the Planning Board, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion carries. All right. Mr. Connolly, I'm gonna recognize you in a second. Again, huge thank yous, especially at a town meeting. Thank you for bearing with us tonight and staying with us. Mr. Connolly.
Please, I have to take the motion back to the school. Motion to dissolve. Mrs. Taylor is seconding. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.